I'd like to call to order the November 17th Selectmen's Meeting. Join me for a Pledge of Allegiance. We specifically don't have a cleaning for that reason. First on the agenda is public comment. If anybody wishes to stand and make their voice heard, now's the time.
So Kevin Cahill, 650 Reservoir Drive, Ware. So I'm here tonight to personally thank and applaud Administrator Bolton for her 30 years of dedicated service to the town of Ware. 16 years as Town Administrator. She's been working tirelessly with, believe it or not, over those years, 28 different selectmen. There's been numerous board heads, committee heads, department heads, and citizens of Ware. She's dealt with all the trials and tribulations a small town can throw at you. She will forever, I believe, be woven into the fabric of Ware. And I, again, personally would like to thank her for her tenure. Thanks for your time.
Speech? Anybody else? Frank?
Thank you, Frank Campana. I may need to be stopped and try to put this. I was going to do this, get on the agenda for tonight, but figured you guys had enough, so I'll try to do this in public comment. I want to, first of all, read something from the same subject. The subject is, I received a similar budget runoff that you folks received at the end of the last meeting, that you were gonna, the opportunity to go through. And I received that also. And I noticed that, this is for 2026. And to my surprise, I guess somewhat, and I'm sure you have noticed, on page five of that budget runoff, there's a line there, 288, 288A. It's Police Department. And the subject is Police Cruiser in the Budget. It's here. And I want it to be perfectly understood. I am not questioning the merits or the need for a Police Cruiser. What I am concerned about and quite upset about is the attempt to put that in the budget. Okay? I use the word traditionally, a lot of times change tradition. But it, that car, like other vehicles, goes through the CIP process, which you are very familiar with. Certainly Mr. Dearborn is.
How much you say, Frank?
Pardon me?
How much, what are the numbers you said?
Oh, it's page five.
Okay, but what's, how many?
It's just about halfway down the page. And it's 288A.
Quarter million dollars.
Pardon me?
You're saying it was $280,000?
No, the line number. That's the line number.
There's a dollar in it.
There's...
Dollar?
There was, well, I missed that. There is a dollar. Right, I did, I missed that. I missed that, yeah. That was going to be one of my questions. But anyway, you know, I'm a type of guy where I like local control with regards to town budgets, ask me for tax money. Local control as much as possible, all right? You know, you can't have everything. But back in 2020, I'm sorry. Back in 2024, there was also an attempt by the Police Chief. Again, I'm not being critical of him. I'm not questioning the need for a car. I want that to be perfectly understood, Mr. Police Chief. Chief Moore. So it was the same issue back in '24. The minutes. Campana, that Board of Selectmen is going to be looking at budgets, as you are tonight, mentioned the Police Chief has a new line for Cruisers. In the 20, 2020, there was a similar attempt. The Board of Selectmen eliminated the line. They eliminated that line. It has always been a request through CIP process. And then goes on a little bit more.
So Frank, if I just got it correctly?
Yes.
You're objecting to the fact there is a line in there, and it's a dollar against it. Is that correct?
I don't care what the amount is necessarily. I'm questioning...
Okay, let's say it's a dollar, you're against that.
I'm questioning, I'm against having a line in the budget, irrespective of the dollar amount, okay?
I just want to make sure I understand what your point is.
I'm questioning the line...
Thank you.
All right? To have a line to get a Police Cruiser in the budget.
For any amount of dollars.
For any amount of money. That's secondary, okay? So I would like the Selectmen to consider very much, probably won't happen this year, this time around, but I think the request for a Police Cruiser, the same as a truck, has always been a separate warrant article. It should be a separate warrant article.
I don't think anybody's arguing with you. I think it's going to be...
Well, you're not even hearing me yet. Well...
How much longer is this going to go on? You don't like the one dollar. We understand that.
You're focusing on the dollar amount. I'm focusing on the process to have a vehicle now be bought through a budget, as opposed to a separate warrant article similar to the truck. Okay?
I don't see that as happening. I think if we're going to buy a car, we're going to buy a truck, I think it's going to be done by a warrant article.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to discuss tonight.
Well, not right here, but we'll...
Well, I thought that...
...through the appropriate time.
I thought that's what, your meeting was tonight to have the department heads here and to go through the budget that was handed out to you last week.
Offered any budget.
Right. So...
We'll do that.
So again, I want you to take note of that. And there's a little bit more to it, but again, I know it's public comment. And you can, you know, it should be expressly, you know, right in front of the voters, a car, whether it's a car, whether it's a truck, whether it's another, well, we don't have too many other pieces of equipment. So, you know, don't take the right of the voters. Unfortunately, a separate, even a separate warrant article, you know, has not been too positive for the Police Department. Again, I stress that, you know, probably overdue time. But the process should be, to request a vehicle, should be a separate warrant article, and it's right there in front of the voters to see. Not hidden, all right, in a budget, line 288. Yes, it's there. But to me, that's an end run type of proposal by the Police Chief, to circumvent the voters so that only he has the authority and the right to buy a car.
Question, a couple of questions, actually, because I have some questions about this for you. Is it an amount of money that's concerning you? Or is it the item that concerns you? I'm not talking about the dollar line item. Here's my question. What if they need a photocopier? Is that a warrant article? Nope?
Don't, those are already in the operating budget. When was the last time?
Right.
When was the last time we voted by a separate warrant article for a photocopier?
That's my question. Is it a dollar amount issue? The amount of the item is what makes it a warrant article for you?
Well, what makes it a warrant article for me is the opportunity for every taxpayer to have the opportunity to vote a yes or no on a vehicle that goes through the CIP process before you vote, similar to a truck, a highway truck. All right? If you're going, if you're going, if you're successful to put a Police Cruiser in the, and I know there's some people out there that, they're proponents of that. But if you authorize a Police Chief to put, to purchase Police Cruisers through the operating budget, then you better be consistent and do the same thing for the Highway Department.
Frank, I don't know if anybody's going to do any of those things right now.
Well, I just want...
...because we had this conversation.
I...
I mean, if you could buy a car for a dollar, I'd say you got a good case.
You're not going to buy a, no. The dollar is...
Where's the magic money coming from?
The dollar is the placeholder.
Well, yeah, but so what?
Jeff, I'm sorry. This is Frank's opinion. We're not here to have an argument like him on that.
We should, we should truncate because it's gone on way too long.
Okay.
Anybody else? Rick?
Ricky Hippler, Quaker Street. I'm here to kind of just echo what Kevin said. Naomi, I mean, I was on the board for nine years, and she was always a phone call away, no matter where she was. She was, she was top-notch, always had her heart in it. I mean, her and I here on Christmas, her and I over in the cemetery, program for graves. All kinds of good memories when it came to Naomi. I didn't know it was 28 Selectmen she served under. That's a heavy load. But like I said, I hope that the process is going well in finding her successor. I'm not going to say replacement because you'll never replace her. And I just hope that the next Town Administrator we hire has half the heart and dedication that Naomi Bolton has in this town. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep. Let me see if I can get through this without crying, so...
Can we stay with it?
No, I'll sit. It says, "Growing up, I was," and I wrote it down. "Growing up, I saw firsthand the dedication my father brought to his work as a public employee. His commitment to serving the Boston community wasn't just part of his job, it was part of who he was. He spent 16 years as a deputy police chief and 17 years as the fire chief while working full-time to support five kids. Watching him taught me that public service is more about, more than policies and procedures. It's about integrity, accountability, and the impact one person can have on many lives. Over time, I developed my own appreciation for the role of public employees in keeping our community safe, informed, and supported. That sense of purpose is what drove me to contribute my skills and service to others. I'm proud to have continued my father's legacy by building a career in public service, one that allowed me to have a tangible difference, uphold the public trust, and inspire others to serve with the same dedication that inspired me. As I stand here today and look back at 30-plus years of service to the town of Ware, I do so with deep gratitude for the people I've worked alongside, the residents of Ware I've served, and the trust that was placed in me. Serving this community has been one of the greatest honors of my life. But there comes a time in every career when one must recognize it's time to step aside, to allow new voices and fresh energy to carry the mission forward. I do so in pride in what I've, what we've accomplished and consider, and confidence in those who will continue that work. While I always carry my passion for public service in my heart, I'm ready to embrace the new chapter surrounded by people who've been my greatest source of love, strength, and inspiration. The next chapter for me will be one of family, cherishing time with my husband and best friend of 45 years, Bill, who stood beside me with love and unwavering support and always been my constant foundation. I look forward to more laughter and memories with our two sons, Jason and Jeremy, their wives Sarah and Heather, and our beautiful grandchildren Caroline, Lydia, Charlie, and Brooks, who continue to remind me what truly matters. Before I step away, I'd like to thank all the dedicated individuals, selectmen, committee members, volunteers, residents, and the most amazing staff and any department heads anyone could ask for. The relationships built and the challenges overcome together have left a lasting mark on me both professionally and personally. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge and sincerely thank the current board for the recent apology extended to me and my husband. It meant a great deal to the both of us. There were times when leadership spread false accusations, and unfortunately, some residents believed them as truth. That was very hurtful to me and my family, but professionally, I chose to rise above it and continue serving this community with integrity, respect, and dedication. While the difficult experience I faced were not with this board, your gesture showed integrity, compassion, and respect for the principles of fairness and accountability that make our community strong. Your willingness to recognize the past and extend that courtesy speak volumes. Over these past few months, this new board has really shown what real leadership and teamwork looks like. You check in with the department heads and staff face-to-face. You listen, you make sure things are going well. Lastly, I want you all to know that it isn't goodbye. It's see you later. I look forward to crossing paths with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Close the public comment portion of the meeting. We've got department heads and committee items. We have a couple of department heads here. Who wants to go first? Chief Moore?
So the first thing is the Animal Control Officer for Ware. Selectman Benson Goodwin, he resigned early this year, unfortunately. But we have an individual who can more than fulfill the duties for our ACO, and that's our Administrative Assistant, Emily Doffinas. If you've met her, you know she cares quite a bit about humans. She works part-time in a veterinary clinic. But when our ACO hasn't been available for the six years I've been there, she was consistently the one who stepped up and got the job done repeatedly, without any complaint or anything, because she just loves animals. She will be an asset to the town of Ware. But my proposal is that she step in as the Animal Control Officer for the town of Ware, effective this Friday, November 21st, 2025, and receive the amount in that line for compensation, which is the Police Department's account, 4414-10150, which is $13,494. That's my proposal.
Need a motion? We've, you know, we've talked about this in non-public. Anybody want to discuss it, or are we ready for a motion? Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah. Can I see this? Now I make a motion that we have the Chief of Police appoint Administrative Assistant Doffinas as the new Ware Animal Control Officer, effective November 21st, with the annual compensation of $13,494.
Second?
Second. Second by James. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you very much. Second item is we were approved to receive grant funds, which will reimburse us for the purchase of two new Raptor in-car radar systems. Each system is $2,134 and another $270 to remove the old radar and install the new one for a cost of $4,808. That does lower warrant articles, it's already been factored into this year's warrant article, but it'll be factored into future years if a vehicle is approved this year. I'm requesting to use DAM funds to cover the initial cost, which will, which we will then be reimbursed at 75%, which is $3,606 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety grant we have already obtained for 2026. Once the reimbursed funds are obtained, I request they be reapplied to the DAM fund balance. So the total cost for this project is $1,202. And that's it. Any questions about that?
No. One more question?
Well, this is to replace equipment that's kind of long in the tooth?
Yes, so both of these systems will be replaced in Dodges. One's radar system, five, I believe it's five, was actually damaged by a person we arrested. He ripped out the radar and proceeded to destroy our backseat partition, which he has reimbursed the town for. But it'll be placed in five, and then we're going to look at two. Dodges are always a last-minute decision just to see which ones are in the worst shape, which one's going to be replaced next. We're going to put the radar in. We're required to put it in within 90 days once we actually order it and receive it and everything. So it's not like we can put it in the shelf. We have to put it in the Dodge. And then once we are approved for additional vehicles throughout the years, we can, you know, these have about an eight-to-10-year life cycle. We'll be able to pull it out and put it in the next Tahoe that we get down the line in several years. So it'll, it'll reduce that warrant article by this much because we won't have to buy the radar system.
Do you have a question? So we need a motion to approve the DAM funds to purchase the radar systems. Want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we direct the Chief to purchase the new radar systems, install them in the Dodge Chargers for an initial cost of $4,808 and being reimbursed through the grant. You've already received the grant, you said?
Yes, FY26, New Hampshire Department of Highway Safety.
Already received grants for a total cost of $1,202.
The money to replace the DAM funds when we get back.
And to be, yeah, to have those replaced. Have those funds replaced. Reimbursed through the DAM fund when they come in.
Right.
That's what I meant to say.
Second?
Second by James. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Aye?
Thank you very much.
Any other department heads? I saw the... Library raises hand?
Jason was kind enough to let me go. Actually, I didn't ask for the Fire Chief, though. Do you want to do flip a coin or something? Okay. I guess he's got, okay. I'll try to keep this brief.
You have a public hearing at seven.
Right, pass these around. I only got, I only made 14 copies, so people not yet might have to share. If you want to see it.
Is this your budget?
Yes.
Okay, we're not there yet.
I'm not doing that yet.
Oh, darn. At least you can look at the budget ahead of time.
Not yet. Too anxious. We'll get there. Fire Chief had everything, or is he just budget? Budget, okay. We have a public hearing to start at 7:00.
Do you want to read the manifest?
Yeah, may as well.
The manifest right there.
In the meantime, I'll read the manifest. Make a motion to order the Treasurer to sign the payroll and accounts payable checks dated November 20th, 2025, as included in the following manifest. Payroll manifest, $90,905.85. Accounts payable manifest, $143,792.54, for a total of $234,698.39. The following manifest was previously ordered to sign at the November 3rd Selectmen's Meeting. Payroll manifest of $82,873.90 and accounts payable manifest of $54,029.43. Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Yep.
Opposed, abstained?
Okay.
Two minutes, but...
I'm going to make one small announcement. It won't take long. We got the order from the court regarding a case that the Grace Church, New England, had against the town of Ware. And it was, the Ware, Town of Ware was successful in summary judgment, so hopefully that is done and over with.
I've got just another small one.
Okay, quick.
Yes.
Have you met him?
Do you know? The radio system is officially up and running. Special thanks to Jack Dearborn, Ricky Hippler, and John Van, who I spoke to and called to today. Those three were instrumental in getting this done to where we are. It took years, so thank you very much.
Okay. 7:00. We have a public hearing. Testimony comment on acceptance of approximately 615 feet of Al's Drive as a Class 5 town-maintained road.
I don't, do you need...
We've got a report from the town engineer signing off everything. We've got a letter from the surveyor saying the bounds have been set. And actually, we were on a sidewalk last week, and we witnessed the bounds and saw the road. The town engineer recommends a bond of $10,000 to be posted for a maintenance bond for a period of two years. That will, you come in two years from today, and you'll get the bond release. Doesn't require a hearing or anything. So I think the contract did a great job building the road. It looks great. I don't know if anybody's been out there, but... Planning board's happy with it. There is something a little odd there. It was, something took three or four phases to get fully built, so there was some... Surveying wasn't as accurate back then as it is today. So we had the person currently owns the road prepare a plan to show where the road is within the right-of-way and all the bounds on the plan. So that'll be a recorded mile hour so that everybody knows where the road is and where the property corners are moving forward. Normally, we don't do that when we're just doing this with a road, but because of the way that thing was hodgepodge together over the years, we kind of thought it was necessary.
Does Jason have any input?
Jason, do you have any comment from DVW on that?
Nope, he said it all.
Okay. So the planning board has made a recommendation that we approve the road, accept it as a town road, so...
You have people who have my...
Does anybody have any? Anybody have any comments? Comments, Mark? No? Okay.
So you closed the public hearing.
Close the public hearing on that. I would entertain a motion for accepting Al's Way as a...
Drive.
Al's Drive as a town, as a Class 5 town-maintained road.
Make a motion we accept Al's Drive as a Class 5 town-maintained road.
Second by Jack?
Yep.
All in favor?
Wait, you have to add your two conditions. I sent you guys an email today.
Oh, you're right.
We need the maintenance bond.
Hold on.
Right, but then there was, there was a line, the stop line didn't get...
Oh, I'm sorry. They had one thing to do, they did, it's a little cold to paint a white line on the pavement right now where you're supposed to stop, so they...
It's, the two conditions would be the posting of a $10,000 warranty maintenance bond to be held by the town for a period of two years and submitting a check to the town for $173.55 to cover the cost of painting the stop bar in the spring. And I guess that's to reimburse you, Jason?
Yep.
That's my motion.
Three second by Jack. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Benji, you're going to stay out for now, or you want to, was that 5:00?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we're down to both of you discussion. Was one of these or that?
We're done. We did that, yep.
We'll do the stuff after this. Thank you.
Does that works?
Do you think it's going to work?
Hey, we work.
Yes, it's going to work. It's taken three tries, but... It's not good. Wish I had my mouse with me, but I don't. Here we go. There he is. Okay. Hello. So tonight, we're going to review the proposed budget of 2026. It closed. Try it again. There it is. Nope. Sorry, it closed. Okay, so the first sheet you have in front of you is just a summary of the categories. So if you're trying to figure out why our proposed budget is higher, we broke it down into categories so it'd be easier to understand before we look at the overall budget by different departments. So to start off, our contracts have increased $36,028. So right there, we need to increase our budget by $6,028 to cover the contracts that have been signed. For payroll, the proposed budget is increasing by $65,749. And I list why. Some lines go up, some go down. A large portion of it is going to be the highway and transfer station on-call bonus that's going to be proposed. The potential new town administrator hire is in there. There's some payroll items that are already obligated, such as the highway foreman promotion that was already obligated. The proposed police chief contract, which I believe you heard in non-public tonight. The transfer station foreman promotion that's already obligated. That person is already receiving that pay. And then there was just a little for rounding, just because it's payroll. And then we had some removal of five. We removed the forest fire stipends. And then we did a large restructuring of the town office here. The police department is proposing to remove the one part-time officer and the part-time administrative assistant. The reduction of AC for stipend, that will change after the motion that you guys made this evening. And then the removal of the fire officer stipend. And the nondiscretionary items, these are the items that we have to have in order to run the town. The largest is the property liability insurance. Right off the bat, we are short $149,000. Trash disposal, that's another one of our large differences. We only have $191,000 for trash disposal. We need 242. So I put these in order of largest to smallest. Obviously, the board of selectmen, when they redid the per gallon on the gasoline and diesel a few weeks ago, that saved the town $141,710. So that was a huge savings, which helped offset some of these larger nondiscretionary items. So our nondiscretionaries need to be increased $172,170. And then we have our discretionary items. Legal fees, we only have $20,000 budgeted. We need at least 60. But these are discretionary items. These are where we could those are the items that we can work with. The second page, oh, you just flip it over. It's just a small chart that shows you, the bottom half is our default budget. That's what we have currently, which is $9,253,700. As you can see, on top of that, we have our insurance and property liability insurance, the waste disposal, the contracts, again, already obligated, software support, the capillary mutual aid, payroll that's already obligated, and we have three elections next year, so that's also going to increase. So with our default budget and these mandatory obligated expenses, the budget would be $9,544,845. So all we have is this small section on top, and that's what the department heads are going to speak tonight about. It's just this small section on top here. The next piece of paper I gave you is just a summary, and this is what you're used to seeing. It's by department. So you can see the general government, the default is $1,286,000. We're proposing $1,378,000. So that did increase by $92,362. If you go down through, the largest one is going to be in the selectman's office. We talked about the potential TA hire. Land use, there was a $5,000 increase. Government buildings, you'll see a large increase in those lines, mostly due to heat, electricity. And then a small increase in the advertising and our dues for NHMA. The next section is insurances. This is property and liability insurance. That's where you see that large increase of $149,000. Police department, he has a 2.93% increase that he's proposing. The fire department has a 3.57% increase that they're proposing. And then emergency management, ambulance, code enforcement, and forest fires, those budgets actually go down by $14,000. Highway department, his budget was reduced, so he's coming in under budget or under default by 1.98%. Street lighting was a small increase. Our biggest increase in this department is going to be transfer station. And again, that's going to be our waste disposal. Sewer went down and water district went up a little bit. So overall, for other public works departments, there's a 15.82% increase. Again, most of it is the waste disposal, and then the contract for Holly is going to be in there. Animal control, again, that's going to change again after tonight's motion. Health, small increase. Welfare, there was a small decrease. Parks and Recs, small decrease. Library has a $7,000 increase or 2.22%. Patriot Purpose took that out. Conservation, there's decreased energy commission. That's going to be a new line this year, so it's an increase of $425. And there's no change in our debt service from our default to our proposed. So overall, we're looking at a $9,633,181 proposed budget. That's $380,111 more than our default, so it's a 4.11% increase. So that's just a summary. Tonight, we're going to get into the detail. So the paper I gave you tonight, we went through per selectman Dearborn's suggestion and highlighted the rows. If they went up, they're red. If they go down, they're green. If you want to talk about the other rows, we can. If you want to just talk about the ones that have the change, we can do that.
I just will start out with the changes, I suppose.
Okay.
If somebody has a reason as to why we're unhappy with the ones that stayed the same, we can...
Okay. All right, so our first budget, the town officer salary, there's going to be no change. In the town officers, we are proposing a $4,789 increase. And that is to the mayor. So this is the actual cost in 2025. So we just brought those over. I am proposing a new line for computers because we don't have a line for computers in this building. So everything that we've had to purchase has come out of office supplies. So you can see that we've almost spent $5,000 out of a $1,700 budget. So between the new line for computers, that's $2,000. Townwide emails went up $1,300. That's because every member of every board now has their own email address. Office supplies increased by $800 because of costs. And we're reducing books, updates, and miscellaneous fees. The recording fees for the cemetery has always come out of this line, but we're moving it to the cemetery budget where it should be. For elections, we have three elections in 2026. Can't get around that, so there's an $8,425 increase in that. Any questions in those first three? Okay. Okay, so tax collector, there's a lot of changes, but this is due to that restructuring. So although you'll see some increases here, you'll see some decreases in other departments because of this. So when I say restructuring town office, and you'll see decreases later, that's why. For telephone, we're reducing it. We're increasing the meetings and seminars. Mileage due to the conferences that are required. Tax billing supplies, an increase of that because of printing in the envelopes. And then an increase in the computer support. Back to that first page I showed you, computer support's going to be increased in almost everyone's line. We haven't had a proposed budget passed since '23, so those keep going unfunded. Any questions in tax collecting? Any changes you want to see? Okay. All right. Assessing, we're reducing the telephone and the recording fees, just because we haven't spent any. Increase seminars and trainings so that she can attend the annual conference. Again, software support, 5% increase. And then postage, because next year, we're going to have a revale year, so there's going to be a lot of mailings next year. So small increase of $545 for that department. Legal expenses. Okay, so this is what we're proposing. Our default budget is only $20,000, so we're proposing 60. I did reduce the labor relations, the legal for planning and ZBA to try to offset that one because we haven't used all those recently. So overall, we're asking for $22,500. We're trying to help offset that large increase here by reducing those.
Where does that $40,000 come from?
The $40,000 we're going to raise from taxes?
I understand.
Oh, okay.
I know that's where it's coming from.
Oh, okay. This is what we spent so far.
Why are we going from 20 to 60? We've spent 60 already?
We've spent 60 so far this year.
I see. Okay.
We had kind of a tough year in that department.
Well, I understand. We had some issues.
We got a, we entered into a new contract last year, mid-year.
So you got good numbers.
Yep. That line's always underfunded.
I know where that money comes from.
Where'd it come from? It's going to come from taxes.
Thank you.
I like questions like that.
Hopefully, we won't get there again this year. I mean, we had some issues this past year we had to get over, and I think we're wrapping, we're in the process of tying them all up.
That would be nice. Do you want to reduce that number?
No, because I'm not sold on that.
Okay. Okay. We always, we always hope. In the finance administrators budget, reducing the telephone by $300,000. Increasing the meetings and seminars to attend the New Hampshire Government Finance Officers Association meeting. Increasing the office supplies because the checks, all the card stock for all the checks, all the envelopes, the W2s, the 1099s, all your ACA compliant forms have gone up. And then the software support to run the software. So it's an increase of $1,798. Any questions there?
Can't just use Microsoft Excel for bookkeeping stuff?
No. I wish.
I didn't think so.
No. Not with the government funding. For the town clerk's budget, she's reducing her budget in the telephone line by $300. She is going to see, you're going to see increases in the seminars, the dues, and the mileage because she would like both the deputy and the clerk to attend all the meetings so that when she leaves, whenever that is, the deputy will be able to, is already educated, will slide her out. It's nice to have both of them at the seminars and trainings. Office supplies, the cost of the toner for her printers that she has to use to run motor vehicle registrations has gone up. She is in, would like to do a shredding contract. This is for disposal of confidential information that she has in the office. The company that she looked into will do 13 pickups annually, and they will give her two locked receptacles that she can put items in during the year, and then they'll just come and pick them up.
How are they doing now?
They shred.
She has to shred?
They have to shred. Takes a long time. Again, their software support is going up by $1,000. And then she entered into a photocopier lease this year, so the lease is included into her budget by $972. So overall, her budget went up $5,496. Any questions on those items? Okay, so the selectman's office. Again, you'll see the restructuring of the town office. This is where you're going to see those negatives before you saw the positives to help offset, to hire someone to do the meeting minutes. Increase the wages for the town administrator. It's not set in stone, but I took that off of your advertisement. With those wages increasing, obviously payroll's going to increase. Telephone, again, we're reducing the telephone. Website hosting, that's just the actual cost. That's what we actually spend, so brought it over. And then the dues, the dues are increasing for town administrator. So in that line, we have an increase of $8,568. Any questions on what I did in selectman's office? Okay, cable, that one's easy. We reduced that budget by $498 because they have a capital reserve fund. If they need supplies and equipment, they can go to the capital reserve fund to get it. No change in trustees of the trust fund. In the land use department, again, we have the restructuring of the town office. We're reducing a pass-through account just because it's a pass-through. You only have to have a dollar in there to keep it open. We used to have $100 in it. We don't use it. Again, it's a pass-through. Telephone, we're reducing. Advertising notices, we're reducing because the requirements changed. We used to have to advertise in the union leader. We don't have to do that anymore. The dues actually went down. We did increase the mileage in case she wants to go to training. Office supplies, we reduced. Postage, we increased only because the cost of sending out certified letters has increased and we're not getting our money back. So there is an offsetting revenue to this line, so. So there is an offsetting revenue to this line, so. Uh, land use, books and updates, that was increased by fifty dollars. So that budget has an increase of four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And most of that's due to the restructuring here. Government buildings. Biggest increase in government buildings is gonna be that contract for custodial services. That went up eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, again, that's a contract. And then the rest is electricity and heat, and that's all just based on usage, it'll go increasing electricity, reducing the heat. Lawn care contract, that went down, two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. The rest is based on usage, it's all electricity and heat. Some of it's going up, some of it's going down. So again, that budget is gonna have an increase of twenty-five thousand, three sixty-nine. Most of that is due to the, uh, contracts that were signed. Any questions on those? I'm going, going too fast, let me know. Cemeteries, um, there's that recording fees that I took out of the other budget, we're bringing it down here, because this is where it belongs. The lawn care contract was reduced. Cornerstones, uh, we reduced those, there's a revenue offset of those. So that budget goes down one thousand and fifty dollars. Insurance, okay, this is our large one, the general liability and property insurance went up a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We also have to have, um, a new insurance on the tower, so that's five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. So our insurance has went up a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. That's gonna be a large one.
So this is Primex?
Yes, yes. For advertising, um, and then regional association, our dues for NHMA went up, which is a three point two percent increase from last year. And then we're gonna get into the police department.
Quick question on insurance.
Yes.
Is that going up for, because of any particular event, or is that just?
Nope, um, that's just going up because we are stuck with a default number from three years ago.
So in other words, it's been going up over time?
Yes, it has, yeah. And if you look at what we spent, five twenty-one, it actually went down. But we're stuck with the default number, so.
Makes it skewed.
Yeah, it does. I was really happy to see it go down, even though it was just a little bit, a thousand dollars, that's nice. For the police department, do you want him to go over his lines that increase and decrease? Or do you guys have any questions?
Obviously, if we have questions, we'll ask him, I guess.
Okay, um, so the first one is going to be the, uh, proposed contract. We have the increase, and then we have the decreases, because he is going to eliminate the part-time admin assistant position. And he believes that one-time officer, one officer is gonna be eliminated, we have one part-time officer currently, he's eliminating the second one.
I don't want, that's something to change.
Okay, okay. Not tonight? Okay. Alright, so most of this is, um, the increases are due to the proposed contract. The record storage, he decreased that line by a thousand dollars, because he built storage here in this building that's secure. He is proposing a health wellness service, um, this is a cardio and a mental, correct? Cardio and mental, um, for all the officers.
Just wanna explain that real quick, chief?
Sure. This was a Warren article last year.
Yeah, I thought I remembered it.
Yep, so five departments more susceptible, susceptible, susceptible to carcinogens, meaning they get cancer in their lungs from all the smoke they breathe in. We, uh, in our profession, we experienced, I think it's in excess of eighteen hundred critical incidents throughout our career, the average, adult, four. So we have a much higher stress level on our heart. So this test, I believe it's the protein, one of them's, uh, blood test, test the proteins in each person to determine if there's any precursors existing in our bloodstream, which will show where we're getting ready to have a heart attack or something, so, you know, we're just trying to live. And then the other one, there are mental wellness checks. So the blood tests are for all the officers. The mental wellness checks, uh, are for all personnel in the police department, because even, um, like our administrative assistant, she's in evidence tech. You can imagine some of the evidence, um, some of that's pretty stressful, so she has a resource for mental health, uh, as well, so that's those two components. I touched a button.
Okay, so let's see, that line, um, he's increasing, um, his telephone line by a thousand dollars, because, um, of the air cards that are in every cruiser. And then his fax line, uh, dispatch went up, and that's a contract that the board entered into last year, so that increased by thirteen thousand, four fifty-nine. Uh, he's increasing his recruitment costs, because the cost of background investigations has gone up. And he's proposing to be New Hampshire accreditation, or credited, so he's proposing the six hundred, six thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollar increase in that line, to begin that.
We wore this once upon a time, correct?
Yes, we were, actual, this is just state accreditation. This is also just accreditation, it's act, this, uh, proposed budget. Includes four programs now. New Hampshire accreditation, uh, we have a third-party vendor who reviews our policies and forms and keeps them up to date with accreditation standards. Rather than us having to spend our time doing that, we still review them and make, uh, adjustments, but he provides us the basic forms. Blue Voice, we just learned about this, this is AI, um, for police officers. And this, it was really cool, and this is gonna obviously age me, which I'm not hiding anything, but everybody remember Judge Dredd with the officer standing there with the little portable phone? Well, you know, I've got a, this is that program, it's crazy. I've got a domestic party, can I arrest both suspects, or both parties? And it'll give you all the case law, all the current RSAs, everything you need as an officer, so you can make an informed decision, as well as the department policy. Amazing presentation. And then Power DMS is the platform we use to upload our accreditation standards to the state, so that's standard, so for all of those programs, it's sixty-seven fifty.
What does accreditation do for the department?
It should be an insur, uh, an insurance drop-down. I haven't had that confirmed, I've been hearing about, about it for about three years, but they talk about it every year at the chief's conference, well, I'll go in a couple weeks, and hopefully, they finally got that done with Primex, so we should see an insurance drop, which is needed, based on what they've just given to us.
I, I thought it did, so thank you.
Do you know how close you are to the standards now?
So I, we've got in excess of a hundred policies, I think it's like a hundred and thirty-eight, I have eighteen left, uh, to get done. We would have been done this last spring, but this has been a little busy year with some off-the-wall stuff, so that held us up. I'm hoping to be done probably by April. And of course, then I'd have to get, I, I wouldn't be able to start before April, it has to get in the budget for me to have funding to apply for accreditation, so. As far as policy-wise, I hope to be ready to go, um, and then it should take, yeah, I don't wanna put a timeline on it, we gotta get funding first. And then I'll, I'll give you a projected date of when we can do it. But we're setting it up to do that once funding's.
But it would, it would be able to be done next year if you got the funding for it?
Oh, I would apply for it as soon as we get it done, that's, that's my goal, as soon as funding's there, we can start the process, however long that takes.
Okay, um, so the next line he's increasing would be his training line, and he's proposing a fifteen hundred dollar. And that's for annual training per admin code, P O L, four zero three point zero one. He's also increasing his dues by twelve hundred dollars, and this is for.
SWAT team.
SWAT team, thank you. The SWAT team. The cleaning services, um, that was reduced by fifty-five eighty, because, um, the government building one increased, you saw that large increase for the custodial services, that's because we took it out of the individual departments and covered it under that one. For tasers, it's a little confusing, um, there is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar increase, um, but that's because he's combining these three accounts. So there's.
Two accounts. Shouldn't speak to two lines, two lines for TASER, two for B W C?
Yeah, well, you had a TASER assembly line. You don't have that one anymore, so we took a dollar from there. We took sixty-six seventy-three from body worn camera equipment.
No, that was combined with the other B W C line.
Yeah, so those two are combined?
Yes.
Body worn cameras and B W C, okay. Okay, explain that, because body worn cameras were increasing by four thousand, one hundred and eighty-six, and then we're gonna reduce sixty-six seventy-three.
So body worn cameras, this eighty-four eleven takes care of my body worn camera lines. Because I already had money in the budget, um, I have that much left over, because it was a Warren article, which was approved last year, last year. So I've actually got like twelve thousand dollars in that line, so that line's gonna be reduced by forty-one eighty-six, which I propose to move up to tasers. But to get our TASER program enacted, it's eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one. We combine, uh, six twelve and six thirteen, and we combine, uh.
Yeah.
Yep, six seventeen and six fifteen.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
How many cameras you buying?
So we get three cameras annually, they have a five-year lifecycle, and one docking bay, is what we have budgeted. Uh, plus the licensing and software support, which is.
So that's the eighty-one hundred dollars?
Uh, eighty-four eleven, yes, that provides us.
So they're around twenty-eight hundred bucks a piece?
No, uh, body worn cameras are about eight hundred, the docking bay is about eighteen hundred. And then licensing and software is forty-five hundred, roughly.
So you need a new docking bay every year?
I have it in the budget every year, because we only have, we have one right now, we're still waiting on another one, we don't have enough cameras to fill up the one right now, I think there's six bays on one, or six docks on one bay, and we have five cameras currently, if I'm not mistaken. And as soon as January first hits, we'll have our second, it's in the budget, so I've got it in excess. But yes, we have a docking bay, three cameras, licensing and software for eighty-four eleven annually.
So every year, you want to buy three?
Yes.
So that's over a five-year period?
Yes.
So you've got fifteen cameras?
Yes.
Okay. And the same with the tasers?
Yes.
And so, so over five years, you refresh all your tasers?
Yes. They also have a five-year lifecycle, and Axon provides a, I believe it was a ten million dollar liability insurance policy, as long as the TASER's under five years, if it had some type of electronic malfunction.
Oh, or judgment against us?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Computers, two computers. These, these.
Yes, and also with the, uh, AFIS software, that's the software which.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I got it, okay. What's B W I C equivalent?
Which one you at?
Two seventy-one. What's that BW?
Body worn camera equipment?
Equipment, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that one went up to, uh, six fifteen, uh, two sixty-nine. Think of mine.
Let's see. Uh, the other increase he has, don't go far, because you might need to have me help on this one. IMC server, the maintenance, um, C S, LOL, and Spots.
Central Square, LOL is slipping in my head, Spots is the state, uh, criminal system.
State police online terminal system.
Well, no, the LOL is that one.
I don't know.
Oh.
That one I don't know.
Yeah, something else we get billed for.
Is that the, uh, that's not part of this. Is it the CGIS interface?
No, that was up in computer equipment. Which line was that again?
Um, account number six twenty-two?
Line two seventy-four.
Hope I didn't use it on LOL on both. Leeds online.
Leeds online.
Great, Leeds, okay.
Okay, uh, thirty-dollar increase to his photocopier service, because he entered into a new one. The board selectmen reduced the fuel vehicles by thirty-six hundred. Uh, we are increasing the vehicle repairs by five thousand, he feels that that is sufficient.
Talk about that.
Yeah.
So what's our current, what's our current balance?
We spent fifteen eight eighty.
Does that, okay, is the other one's getting carried on insurance?
So we repaired one, which was eight or nine thousand dollars right at the beginning of the year, which was approved by a previous board. Because the Warren article was defeated for a new car.
What about the engine replacement?
That's almost done, they are test driving currently, that cost us a thousand.
Is that spitting that number?
Yes. Correct.
Not in the fifteen eight eighty.
Oh, sorry, no.
So we still got a month and a half to go.
Yes.
Even if we order a new car in April, immediately after, should the, um, Warren article pass, it's gonna be.
In the summer, at the earliest.
I don't, we seem like we're always challenged on that.
Yes, sir.
Not what anybody else thinks.
Well, it's always the, it's always what you play, you, you, higher repairs and older vehicles, or vice versa, and.
I'm just saying, is ten thousand the right number, is fifteen thousand the right number?
Probably not if the article fails, for sure, I mean. And I don't think, no.
I just wanted to have a conversation, because we always get hammered on this, because you gotta make it up elsewhere.
If, if, if the Warren articles keep failing for vehicles, we're really gonna see repairs go up, once these Tahos start breaking, like the Dodges start breaking. Because obviously, it costs a lot more to repair a Tahoe, that was never in my plan, uh, to keep Tahos like we keep Dodgers. That's the reality.
Wasn't in the plan, keep the Dodgers like you keep Dodgers.
No, I guess you are absolutely correct.
It was always my argument, you know, and Jay will get up here and do the same thing, it was his turn, it's always the, you know, we get to talking about what kind of vehicle, or what kind of plow truck is better or worse. If they listen to the department heads and rotated them out in the time that they should be there, they all would have been okay. The Volvos have been fine, the Nash will be fine, the Kenworth will be fine, the Dodges have been fine, the Tahos will be fine, but not when they're ten years old. Not when they're twenty years old, so. I think everybody said it till they're blue in the face, and I guess, guess, gotta keep trying, I don't know, I mean. I don't think that's enough money, it, with his current vehicles, but in the, in the light of trying to make a budget rule pass, if you're comfortable that you'll make it at the end of the year, then I guess I'm difficult going along with it.
I just think that's a small step in the direction we need to go, based on the cards we've been dealt, dealt with, the Warren articles continually failing. If the Warren articles were approved on an annual basis, that number would probably be going down.
Right.
I mean, that's the realism of it.
Right. Nope, I hear you, I. Again, we were, I, I think, we were department heads together, we were given the task of making long-term plans for things, and, and you wanted to rotate your cruisers out at five years, and wanted to rotate trucks out at ten, and so we're asked to do that, and the budget was to reflect the lifecycle of the vehicle, and when it doesn't go as planned, then.
Sure.
That's what happens.
Yeah, they should be rotated out at five, I actually have six proposed.
Yeah.
And we're forcing you to do seven?
Uh, yes, the Dodges are on their seventh and eighth years already, and one of them will have to last at least till not, well, two of them will go out at least till nine, at least. And make no mistake, we've had a Dodge in the shop all year long, at least one of them has been broken, while we haven't been able to use it. Which causes the Tahos to go up in mileage, which means they're gonna break sooner.
Right.
It's that caterpillar effect for everybody who was in the military. It's that caterpillar effect for everybody who was in the military. If you don't keep a consistent pace, you just... Back and forth, back and forth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, don't go anywhere.
Yes, sir.
Well, he's here, um, go over cruiser equipment and the cruiser.
Sure, so the cruiser equipment, one thing we found and we're gonna be, I'm still waiting on Gulfstown. Since this is computer, computers have five years lifecycles. It doesn't matter what we do with the cruiser, I still need one data terminal a year. What we have right now is the Windows operating system uploaded to our Dodge computers are obsolete. Gulfstown IT currently has them and they're trying to upload the new system. They don't think it's gonna be compatible, we're waiting on final word. If that's not happening, um, we're gonna have to buy two to three computers this year. We had to do that a couple of years ago because we were in the same situation. But this is why the, we need one MDT mobile data terminal in the budget a year, so we take care of this. We're, we're on that lifecycle plan for replacing one. Even if we don't get a car, we can at least replace the oldest computer we have to keep those current.
And if it is a new car ordered, you would not have to buy a new?
Correct, yeah, it's already taken care of.
So, that's for one, including all the software?
That's the software and a printer, that's actually the printer price too. We haven't seen how long the printers actually, our first ones we got on grant, but they're only three or four years old, so we're seeing how they actually hold up because they get rattled around quite a bit.
But still, that's one cruiser's worth of computer equipment.
Correct. Um, as far as the police cruiser, uh, my apologies to Mr. Campana because usually I do have my PowerPoint up and he could have seen a lot of information online. I don't have it yet, uh, up online, that's my fault, I just forgot to do it. And I checked today, I thought I'd done it, but I haven't done it, so he couldn't check. But the police cruiser line, seven forty, there we go. This is in there because accountability. What I've seen in the last several years is we've had two vehicles in accidents, we've got a grant vehicle. But when we replace vehicles in those circumstances, this is a way to track it, especially if we're moving... You know, we have a detail fund, that detail fund has, I believe, over forty-five thousand dollars in it currently, with some of that going to offset the next warrant article. As well as, once we get paid for our summer dam patrols, that'll be about fifteen thousand dollars. So, we have some funding sources we can move to this line to help offset the cruisers. Cruisers are still going to CIP currently, um, you know, hopefully not down the road, I'll throw that out there. But, uh, this is just to help track if we have a vehicle in an accident. For instance, six, six was in an accident, it had seventy thousand miles on it, that was one of our Tahos. It only cost us six or seven thousand dollars to replace that vehicle, but still, we didn't have a way to actually track it in our budget. It was tracked on Powerbeth tracked it. This just gives us, you know, better accounting to show what we did, when we did it, how we did it. Make sense? But yes, it is one dollar. Anything else?
And then just his ballistic equipment is just his... Um, he just is insufficient, he's got one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars in that budget he needs for his helmets, his vest, his shields and his trauma plates. He needs an increase of twelve thousand two hundred and forty dollars and that will put him on his lifecycle management.
And that's for, so, three sets?
Three sets a year, five years, five-year lifecycle on all ballistic equipment. We are coming up to a choke point in 2027, I believe, where we have six vests which will need to get replaced.
So, this is three vests, three ballistic shields?
No, one ballistic shield, three vests, three helmets. I wanna say two trauma plates because we don't issue trauma plates to the individual, we issue them to the... Trauma plate is like a ceramic plate, it goes over your vital organs which you throw over your vest. It's to stop rifle rounds, hopefully. Don't know until they actually get shot, right?
So, just so we get it straight, if you don't have this line item funded the way you've asked for it, what's the downside to your department?
So, if end of year, if money isn't available for end of year purchases where we can buy it then, officers won't be getting ballistic equipment to keep them safe. I'd imagine we wouldn't be keeping a lot of officers, quite frankly.
That a union issue as well?
Yeah, what?
Would that be a union issue as well?
Yes, uh, matter of fact, it's probably a state issue because the state requires, uh, safe circumstances. I've quoted that, uh, RS, I believe it's an RSA, it might be an administrative code on my CIP presentations for vehicles because some of our vehicles are getting to be, not, and DPWs even worse, so, you know, their vehicles are in more shape than ours, but it's a safety issue.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the last line in his, uh, budget is gonna be the grant reimbursement and that's to match. He needs, as you can tell, he needs his twenty-five percent match in this budget. So, even though it wasn't funded, we've already spent it. He does a lot of grant work out there. So, his increase is sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars, which is a two point nine three percent increase. Is there anything in his budget that you wish to review, more detail, reduce, increase?
I think it's all explained pretty well, I, I do, I do know the question of that. Cruiser will probably come up in the future possibly, I don't know.
Do you wanna discuss that now? Like, do you guys wanna?
What's the rest of the boards, the rest board wanna change that for now or is happy leave everyone?
What are we talking about?
The cruiser line.
The new cruiser, or the cru...
You mean the one dollar?
Yep, whether to eliminate the line or leave it in there.
I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, I'm not saying there is a problem, I'm saying I'm assuming the question that has rose before is it opens up a line in the budget to purchase a vehicle. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying I think you'll, we will hear that more and more going in budget season, so do we wanna...
Make sure I understand, so if we magically found eighty thousand dollars someplace, we could stuff it in there and buy a vehicle?
Yes.
As long, as long as no, you can't do it if no means no. Like, you can't do it when the warrant article fails, you can't do that. No means no.
Okay, so that doesn't circumvent that?
No, you can't.
No, if the warrant articles ask to purchase a cruiser and the voters say no, we can't go to the operating budget and purchase a cruiser.
Well, then...
A no means no.
To me, that should make that question feel better then. If it was voted yes, then, then get it out of that, if it's voted no, you can't do it, so...
Well, if it voted, if we, if our CIP...
That's just a concern I've heard over the time, that's the only reason I brought up.
But if the, if the warrant article for the vehicle has passed and we found eighty thousand dollars kicking around and we thought it was a good idea to buy a car because of the dollars in there, we can buy the car?
Mm-hmm.
No, I understand.
So, is there a reason, like, if a vehicle gets totaled, is there a mechanism to replace that during the year without having that line in there?
Insurance.
Other than insurance, like the balance that would be owed on...
You have a thousand dollar deductible.
Yeah.
So, you gotta come up with a thousand dollars somewhere and the insurance company pays the rest and then your rates go up, so...
But now, if we don't...
It's not new equipment replacement though, right?
It's what?
It's not, it's not new equipment, insurance doesn't replace in kind, it replaces in value, correct?
It would if it was damaged.
Yeah, it depends on...
And I'll give you a good example where that line would come into play. Um, in the past, when one of our vehicles failed the previous year, we had to get a Dodge up and running and the board didn't have a funding source for that, so we went to both detail and dam funds, which I would wanna track in a line to fix the vehicle. It just says police cruiser, it doesn't say net new police cruiser.
Right.
So, money was moved from, uh, the dam fund and the detail fund, about ten thousand dollars to repair the Dodge enough where we could operate another year because the vehicle failed.
Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to hang up on a dollar, I just know that I've heard this in the past and if we're gonna support it, I wanna be able to make the argument to somebody that I'm understanding it correctly, so...
Well, the question I have... Let me take the meeting, just, Chief, you're on, on deck.
No, no, if we vote yes or something, I'll stick up for it.
Well, the question I have is if we don't have a warrant article, but we decide that we're gonna put eighty thousand dollars in there, we could still go ahead and buy it because we didn't ask, so...
Right.
And I think that's...
That's where the question...
That's a concern, yeah.
That, that, that becomes the problem.
Yes.
That's where the questions arose in the past, so... That's what we need to... Gotta reward that, so it's not just for blanket?
Well, I, I don't think rewarding it would necessarily, you know, change, change what you use it for in person.
Is that true?
Mm-hmm, correct. I mean, it doesn't have the word new in it, so he can't go buy a new cruiser, he can't add to his fleet.
Wait, say it again?
Well, if you put new cruiser in there, then you would, no, no.
No, it just says cruiser.
Right, right.
If you put new...
Buying a new cruiser for eighty thousand dollars doesn't hold water then, does it?
It does if there was not a warrant article presented that got voted no.
Yeah. So, and...
We're always gonna have a warrant article to buy cars because we never get it approved.
Time out just for a minute, not if you get it in a budget.
Well, but who's thinking about putting it in the budget?
That is the concern that's been brought to the board.
That's a point zero zero one percent chance of that happening.
But it's, but it's still a question that comes up every year.
Get rid of it.
It's not, it is in there, so it's just underfunded.
Well, this is a new line, it's not in there.
Right, but I'm saying if it's proposed, it would be in there, so the point zero zero would turn to a hundred percent and it is in there. It's just underfunded.
We spend so much time on infinitesimally small chance that why get in it, just get rid of it. I don't see the issue of it there or not, but if it's gonna keep sucking up the oxygen in the room, huh, get rid of it. I mean, it's a ridiculous thing, I don't think we're ever gonna not buy one on CIP. I don't think we're ever gonna discover money kicking around, we can buy a car. I just, I just don't see it.
I don't know.
To terminate this conversation, I vote to get rid of it. Because we're not adding any value to this conversation.
Well, no, other than it has happened, Jack, I guess they don't, they're familiar with maybe all the past. It, it, there are things we've took and, it's gonna, not necessarily for police cruiser. You found money other places and bought it and that's gonna be the concern is that it didn't work it into the budget, which would be the, the desire, I think, of police and probably other departments eventually getting it there. So, you know you got your rotation like you should have, I'm not saying it's wrong.
Well, I agree we should do that, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
So...
We keeping it or just going?
Yeah, what's the board gonna wanna do with it?
Get rid of it. We're wasting too much time on an infinitesimally small issue.
That's one person.
I'll try getting rid of it. Okay.
Miss two, Benson?
I mean, if that's a consensus, I, to me, it seemed like it was being used as place marker.
I agree, but there's too many other agendas being floated that are so small in possibilities that we just, I just don't think we should keep talking about it.
Other than, other than it does provide a, a way of tracking any, any money that's spent this way. If there's a better way to track it, I, I don't know if there's one.
I mean, there's definitely a way to track it, it just wouldn't be in the software. Be in an Excel spreadsheet on the side. Okay, so consensus is to remove the line?
Motion, we'll see what happens.
Oh, just...
I think you got consensus, don't you?
Just the consensus.
Well, you got two.
Yeah, let's, let's get, get rid of it. I'd be all for seeing a new cruiser in the budget, it's up to you.
I would too, but, and the truck.
Yes.
But I don't see that happening.
Right.
If we did, we actually put the money in there for it.
Okay, all right, so next department's gonna be emergency management. Small increase here and this is for office supplies, that's to update the electronic services, devices, sorry, such as the projector that's used in the EOC. Anything else for electronic devices?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions on that? It's a small budget. Uh, fire department, okay, um, we've already talked about, um, the removal of the stipends. A few years back, those were rolled into the hourly wages of the officers. So, those are eliminating. Internet connection, uh, we're increasing that because it costs four sixty-one a month, uh, because there's internet connection in all three stations. And then also the, uh, is it Lucas devices? That have internet? Or is it the hard act monitor?
Bonders.
The monitors.
They transmit to the hospital.
Yeah, so they also have internet on this.
Basically, the forty forty-six number is like five thousand dollars, that's basically twelve months of the rate?
Correct, yeah.
Then how come we had sixty-three?
Um, because he had to purchase, um...
Had to purchase the equipment, uh, the phone equipment when we switched over to Crescendo. There was an initial seventeen hundred dollars, I think, to buy the phone system.
But we won't see that next year. Uh, capillary mutually, we discussed that earlier. It's for their dispatch, their agreement, it's not a contract, it's an agreement, went up thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Building maintenance, he's asking for three hundred, three thousand five hundred dollars more. Actually, he would like more than that, but we're gonna do baby steps because he's a nice guy. He has three buildings that he needs to maintain.
There's been a, there is three buildings we have to maintain and there's just been a severe lack of maintenance done to all the buildings. Number one, the safety complex, the air conditioning system, we had one system go down this summer and that, that goes for the entire safety complex and we had someone come out and take a look at it, those, those units have not been serviced since the building was put there. So, um, we had the one unit serviced and the, the technicians like this is, like, you need to get the stuff serviced every year. Just like you do your furnace at home or every other year or even every three years, but not wait twenty years. And that's been the, that's been the get-go of building maintenance for the town is build it and leave it alone until something breaks or falls apart or falls off or leaks. All the windows in the, in the south station need to be replaced. There's been an energy audit done on that building by EverSource that came out. I'm sure you guys got that and if you didn't, I have a thing, if anyone wants one, I'll be more than happy to print that off. We are getting the overhangs done this year, thank you, um, on the south station because they're rotted. One fell off, the other one's rotted off. Just the condition of the concrete in front of the apron is already starting to spall. East, even though it is not an active station, it's still a building we need to maintain. The paint's falling off the thing, we did have a door replaced. Again, sou, uh, uh, the center station, we have multiple garages doors that go up and down, up and down when the station was built. They were built with happy homeowner garage door openers. Those garage door openers are five, five to six thousand dollars apiece to replace. You know, stuff is just, we're a twenty-four hour, three sixty-five facility and the stuff is constantly being used. And when the building was built, granted, all intentions were that the building was not gonna be occupied, it was a call department. And now everything is getting used a lot more than it would. Even down to our appliances that we have, um, like, for instance, our cooking stove that we have at the center station. When the power was out last year, we were running on generator, that was great, it powered the whole building. You know what it didn't power? The kitchen stove. So, unless you wanna cook a microwave dinner or throw something on the barbecue grill, there was no way to do that. And all those appliances are, have reached their, their age. They weren't, they're, they're, they're homeowner stuff, they're not meant to last twenty years in a facility where that thing is being used every single day to the amount that it's being used by other people, so... Just the expenses of the building and maintenance is just to try to keep up. Just the expenses of the building and maintenance is just to try to keep up with things. I, I'm, I'm just trying to keep the building so there, we're not drastically improving. This money is to keep things level and afloat, so, so the maintenance of the town-owned buildings, it doesn't go into such disrepair. That now, all of a sudden, we have to spend, you know, ten thousand dollars to start fixing something. You know, a little bit of money, a little bit of maintenance every year goes a long way, so that's the increase in that line.
I think I've heard that line of reasoning someplace else, you know, little maintenance over the years.
It goes vehicles do.
Okay, um, the next increase is gonna be for their additional provident policy. Um, that went up five hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um, they're looking for two hundred and fifty dollars increase in printing. Um, they send out survey cards. Their dues went down three hundred and fifty dollars, um, based on what they've spent. Uh, mileage, um, they increased that by a hundred and fifty dollars, cause the IRS rate went up to seventy cents per mile.
How do we get four hundred and thirty-two this year? Training?
Yes. Correct. Um, that's usually just for what mileage is used for is training, when the utility vehicle's not available. Um, last year, the board of selectmen took the lawn care for the cisterns out of the contract, um, and gave that money to them to do, maintain their own cisterns. So see the negative and the positive. Uh, decreasing the intercepts by sixteen hundred dollars. Increase in fire supplies by six hundred dollars. Again, it's a twenty-four seven facility, they go through a lot of supplies. Uh, hazmat supplies, they need an increase of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for, uh, four gas meters. They like to get two a year, keep on schedule. Office supplies, uh, they like an increase of six hundred dollars, and this is replace aging office furniture. Employees are buying their own chairs. Uh, photocopy service, they entered into a new lease, or in year two of five, um, so their, um, contract went up by one thousand eighty-eight dollars. Postage, increase of a hundred and fifty dollars, and this is, again, for the surveys and the comment cards that are being mailed out. The board of selectmen reduced their fuel vehicle based on their price per gallon. Uh, safety medical gear, they're looking for an increase of the three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this is, uh, increased to buy the supplies that they're not receiving from the hospital. Again, I mean, you can see what they spend in that line. We're not done with the year yet. Uh, protective clothing, they need to replace a minimum of two sets a year, so they need an increase of five thousand dollars. Any questions on any of those lines so far?
So?
Yep.
Each, each unit, each outfit is seventy hundred bucks?
For the protective clothing, cost per minute?
Each, each set of clothing runs around fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, that's just for the jacket and the pants. A set of fire boots is five hundred dollars, the helmets, helmets, five hundred dollars, gloves are a hundred bucks, so. We wanna have enough money to buy two sets of gear, but then there's money to buy a hood, boots if someone needs boots, and gloves and stuff like that. The other incidental safety stuff that we buy out of that line.
This, this is something, this is something last year, Jack, he came in and, uh, said that they were, they were behind in, in their protective clothing, and. We asked him to kinda come up with a, uh, a future plan, and it looks like he did that, so I appreciate that.
Yep, we did, yeah. Assistant Chief Anderson worked on that, and it came up with the plan you guys gave us, as a matter of fact. Uh, I just gave Beth the, the bill. The gear, the PFAS free gear finally just came in this past couple of weeks. So that money that you guys gave us last year, we're finally getting to, to use that money, and the people have new gear. That's just the full-time people. We still have call department people, and we still need to get that rotation, so we have that, that life cycle on the gear.
How many sets of the PFAS free do you have now?
Right now, currently, nine sets.
Okay.
Yeah, you might wanna stay, stay local, stay local.
So, whatever. Uh, the physicals and the immunizations, they'd like to increase that line by two thousand dollars, and this is for their annual physicals, per NFPA fifteen hundred. Fire prevention, an increase, they only have five hundred dollars in that budget, they'd like to increase it to fifteen hundred, um, for school handouts. The vehicle maintenance, he'd like to increase his vehicle maintenance by six thousand dollars.
So this is tires?
Tires, t- tires, oil changes, pump maintenance, um, anything that has to do, uh, with keeping the vehicles going. Uh, for instance, we have, as the vehicles, honestly, as the vehicles, you've heard this before, as the vehicles get older, they get more expensive to take care of. I had one piece of pipe that was probably that long, and it was on the tanker, and to replace that piece of pipe was roughly seven thousand dollars. To replace that, cause it came off the pump, and it was custom made, so it had to be welded in little pieces to make the pipe and fit. And I chose to have them cut out the piece and weld in just a little piece to fix it, and they said that's gonna hold for maybe a year or two. But that's seven grand for one piece of pipe in one fire apparatus. I, I go through tires on the front of the ambulance, uh, you know, we, we run them as, as long as we can. The last set, the cords are almost showing through on the front tires, unacceptable. The tanker, I can't afford to put tires on that, I gotta wait to January first, and then go to Mr. G's and put tires on the front of a tanker. You know, you got something that weighs that amount of going down the road in the snow, and you can't steer it, that's a problem, it's a safety issue. All the things, lights, I have lights that have to be replaced, and the lights that have to be replaced, they do not make anymore. So I have to source one strobe light for one of the trucks was four hundred dollars to replace a strobe light. Can we go LED? Absolutely, but that means rewiring the whole truck, and that's another five, six thousand dollars to rewire everything. So, you know, a- as the stuff gets older and, and not being replaced, we have to keep putting more and more money into having the, the maintenance on these. It does go for oil changes and stuff like that also. But, yeah, we just, we, we, the, the cost of everything has gone up. Some of the things we cannot, the highway department cannot work on. You know, even like my Tahoe still has to go back to Bank Chevrolet, I got a list of stuff on there, and the highway department can't do it. Because the stuff has to be programmed by, by General Motors, you can't just buy the parts anymore and throw them in, they gotta be all programmed once you put the parts in. And that stuff costs a decent amount of money to, to, to do, so hence the reason that budget, well, that line item went up.
Thank you, chief.
And, uh, the, the, the pumps themselves come out of that line as well?
If there's, if there's any kind of, if there's any kind of pump maintenance that has to be done, uh, not pump testing, I have a separate line for that, which the pumps are tested every year. But if something is, goes wrong with that, and that pump has to be rebuilt, or a piece fails, or a valve fails, then that has to be, that comes out of that line item, and that has to be fixed and pulled out of that line.
And that's not just a single dollar amount for that?
No, no, absolutely not, so.
What was the cost of the last pump that you had done?
Uh, the last pump we did was, I think, close to sixteen thousand?
Twenty-one thousand, four sixty-nine.
There you go, twenty-one thousand, four sixty-nine. So, um, so it, it, it's a considerable amount of money, and does that happen all the time? Absolutely not, you know? But putting tires on vehicles, front-end alignments on vehicles, um, I mean, we just put a lot of miles on with the ambulances, they take the front ends of those things, take a beating. Um, and it costs a lot of money to continually put that money in tires and front-end parts into those. You know, last year, we had turbo issues with the Fords, um, some of that was covered under warranty, but, so, hence the increase.
Okay, for books and update, there's a small decrease of a hundred and seventy dollars. Um, the education service contract, um, even though it says contract, it's an agreement, um, and that is, was increased to four thousand dollars this year, so that'll be two hundred dollar increase. Uh, training fees, um, they're asking to increase that line by four thousand dollars, um, that's the cost to send employees to train out of state. Uh, uniforms, um, they're asking for an increase of two thousand dollars based on prices have increased. The radio equipment, he needs to buy two radios a year to keep up with the service life, so that's, uh, an increase of eleven thousand four hundred dollars. Um, for the equipment, this is to replace failed hoses, ladders, um, equipment that's at the end of service life, so increase of three thousand dollars. Uh, equipment repair, uh, will decrease of five hundred dollars, and the required testing that he was just talking about, um, that increased fifty-five hundred dollars. So total increase of his budget is forty-nine thousand three thirty-seven, and that is a three point five seven percent increase. Is there anything in his budget that you'd like to review? Anything you wanna talk about, each foot line, to increase, decrease?
No.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement, uh, most of those are the restructuring of the town office, so those will be decreases. Uh, telephone, we're proposing to decrease that line by six hundred dollars. Meetings and seminars, um, we're decreasing that line by five hundred dollars. Uh, printing, um, we're increasing that by twenty-five dollars, um, the price of a box of business cards a year. Um, the dues, um, those were reduced to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so that went down a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the computer software support, uh, we're pro- this was a computer software support that we had two years ago, and we haven't used that software. Um, so we're reducing to eliminate that, uh, cause there might be another software that the board is looking at. Photocopy expense, um, we reduced that to fifty dollars, um, that's just in case, that's for the large copier in the assessor's office. Use it to print maps, um, and copy maps. Um, office supplies, we just increased that a little, by fifteen dollars. Decreased the posters, cause there's really not a lot that goes out of the code enforcement office. Uh, decreased the fuel based on the board of selectmen's price per gallon. Did increase the cost of, again, vehicle maintenance, um, from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, cause I need new tires next year.
That enough?
No, they're like three hundred bucks a tire.
Anyway.
Yeah.
The only reason I'm asking them, some of the budgets, they probably draw up a hundred dollars somewhere, was there, if they're worn out, do you have that in that budget?
To increase this on a regular basis to what, fifteen hundred?
Well, I'm just saying, if he needs tires this year, but they're more than a thousand, well, providing we get past the budget.
Yeah.
If they're more than a thousand dollars, is there somewhere else that he can get the three hundred bucks? I mean, I don't think a thousand dollars will buy him out and balance for a tire.
It's like fifteen hundred bucks, isn't it?
Is it about fifteen?
It's more than a thousand, it's more like twelve or fourteen.
Yeah, it depends on what you get for tires, I just.
I guess in, in this budget.
Guys' or gal's budgets, it'd be, he probably could find three hundred dollars somewhere, I just don't know if there is in this, that's the only reason I'm asking.
He's got a lot of decreases because of restructuring, so.
Yeah, the restructuring, the only thing I would see is up in payroll, to fill in inspector. I mean, since we kinda have a backup currently, we might not need that.
Okay.
That would be the only thing, other than that, it's a very tight budget, we tried to get it down as.
Oh, I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. Tried to reduce a lot.
Honestly, I haven't bought a pickup tire in a while, so I don't know, I'm just asking.
It's like three twenty-five, three fifty?
Fifteen hundred for tires for that? How, how was the truck owned?
Brand new.
Yeah, it should be, uh.
Still under warranty?
I'm not sure on the mileage on it, but yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, it's like.
I'm gonna say it's still under warranty for any major.
I'm sure it hasn't gone over the mileage requirement.
It'll get, it'll get to the years before you get to the miles.
Okay.
I guess we just take a, take a look at that, I just haven't bought tires for a minute for something that little, so. I think I buy as much bigger, but vehicle tires are almost as much money.
We looked at, perhaps, and it was three twenty-five.
So should we increase that to fifteen hundred?
I think, I think we should, I think we should, that way, buy him a couple quarts of oil and some washer fluid.
At least it's, because he does get it underported every year too, so that would eat up that line plus.
Only is there just ain't nowhere to steal out of this budget, nowhere to cut anyone else.
Is this guy?
Right.
So it just changes his difference?
Yeah. Just change it on the spot. Okay, so his budget is still less than the default by six thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Forest fire budget, um, just an increase of seventy-one dollars. Uh, we removed the stipend because that fell under the duties of the chief. Um, and then the equipment, would like to, um, add a line for equipment in the forest fire budget, cause we've never had one. We've proposed it before, but it hasn't passed, um, and that's just to replace the failed equipment. So total increase, seventy-one dollars. Any questions? Thought you had one.
I'm assuming now it comes out of your other vehicle being installed, I'm assuming something happens with forestry or the equipment.
We steal it out of the fires budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or it just doesn't get replaced, which has been what's happened, because I don't have the money to replace it.
Yep, no, I'm not questioning, I just wanna know where it came from before.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on the forest fire budget? Is it safe to say that the chief can leave, or do you have any questions for him?
I would prefer not to.
I don't want him to leave and then you talk about his budgets.
Back up and go around the horn all night, so I guess all the two chiefs are here, if there's anything you guys did wanna back up.
He still has animal.
Oh, okay, but, is there anything you guys wanna back up on from what we've seen, or are you happy?
See you later.
Three point five seven percent increase.
We won't, we won't drag it up and.
It's not goodbye, Steve.
Stole ball you when you're gone, I promise.
If you do have any questions.
Yes.
On that.
Yep, no, free.
Thanks, chief.
Free forwards, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next departments are gonna be the highway department. Um, the largest increase in the highway department payroll is gonna be the on-call bonus that he is proposing, it's three thousand dollars per person.
Is that being divided up multi-payments?
Uh, we haven't.
Hey, sorry, Jason, please come to the podium.
We haven't nailed down the, uh, on-call policy yet, but that was, uh, my intention, to do half upfront at the beginning of winter, and then half when you stuck around through the whole winter.
I, I don't think that's a, a bad way of doing it, my only, if somebody's underperforming, showing up to storms, how you rate that?
Yes, we do like the same thing that's done, that we have done traditionally, is kinda detake the number of storms, how many that the person showed up.
I just know they did that if you paid upfront payments. Not, I'm saying that's wrong, it's nice to get them to.
Yep.
Winter's coming, I want you to stay here, I'm just wondering how to handle it.
We assess it at the end of the year.
Okay.
End of the season.
Okay.
How many, are all your truck drivers on this?
Yeah, all the full-time guys.
So Jason has been fortunate enough, he promoted a foreman this year. Um, so that is all the pay increases due to the promotion. Um, CDR licensing, this again, the board approved last year, or the year before, last year, last year. Again, we didn't get the proposed budget passed, so we're asking again for the fifty-five hundred, um, for CDR licensing. Um, the cleaning services, again, the contract moved to the government building, so we decreased his budget by two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Software support, this was a software that he purchased in twenty, at the end of twenty-four, right, at the end of twenty-four? Yep, the end of twenty-four, so his first software, um, support, this will be an annual software support.
We've been able to try it. We've been able to try it yet, or?
Yeah, we're making pretty good progress on it, we're starting on the, uh, all the inventory on all our parts upstairs and stuff, try to get that in the computer system, but, um, all the on-road stuff's been going pretty well.
Has it, yeah.
As far as kind of secretary taking in the phone calls, making work orders, and the guys taking the work orders, getting out, making sure they're getting done, so.
Good.
Um, the copier at the highway department, um, was at its end of life, um, so we had to, um, get a new copier for that.
They had me down when they got it.
It wasn't hand-me-down.
We had, we drew, we took one down there that wasn't worth much.
No, no, so they got it.
All that clean air from that clean air vents.
Flaming the three inches of dust off of it.
Sucks out of the furnace vent on it, the office equipment.
Uh, the vehicle fuel was decreased by a hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars, and that was totally just based on the, um, price per gallon. His usage did not change.
What fuel is that?
That's for gasoline and diesel.
We set the rates.
For the highway.
I remember that, I only see three-ten up there.
Uh, three-ten was for the unleaded, the three-forty was for the diesel. Um, increase in the alcohol testing by four hundred dollars. Um, they have just been, it's just random that they get tested, and we always go over the sixteen hundred that we have budgeted.
Who, who makes the decision to test?
Is that onsite?
Part of the motor, motor carrier pool.
Yeah.
What part of the federal motor carrier pool?
The town has a policy, um, as well as federal motor carrier has a policy for all CDL drivers. Um, so, just something we have to do.
Who schedules it, who says we're gonna do it today?
Uh, we go through a company called Onsite Drug Testing, Concord, so.
They're gonna do it whether you, so these are the cost of them doing it.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Um, the other increase would be for fuel additives and testing, um, that is for the, oh, we never, eighteen hundred dollars for the inspection, and the fuel additive, the blue death, and just an increase in cost. You can see what he's, he's using, six thousand is just not.
The testing it takes.
So fuel additives are gonna be, uh, blue death for all the newer trucks, newer equipment we have. Um, looks like some of the, um, actual testing for the pumps, yeah, have been coming out of that as well, so. We have to keep up with the fuel pumps. Um, that falls under the, the DPW as far as making sure that, um, those are up and running and in compliance, so everybody in town can have fuel and gas.
So if we spend over ten grand, why we only ask six-five-hundred reserve terms? I know every three years there's big inspections, is that me, or is this?
Yeah, we had one this year, um, and then I think there is just a touch of a mix-up with, um, some of that was coming out of building maintenance, um, so I think we just got to address that a little bit, but, um, that's six thousand, sixty-five-hundred number, should be good.
Be all right, all right.
Um, he's asking for a small increase in the, uh, paint, uh, supplies, and that's for putting stripes in parking lots, possibly a stop sign.
Stop line.
Stop line, yeah. Um, guardrails, him, he's proposing a decrease, um, he wants to reduce that to one dollar. Um, he believes that guardrails can come out of the road reconstruction and maintenance capital reserve fund. Uh, for train source supplies, he'd like to increase that to a thousand dollars, just because of the cost increase. Uh, communication equipment, um, that is for the radio, is that for the radio? Yeah, that's for.
Weather.
Radio and for the, uh, weather precision forecasting service that he receives. Uh, gravel road maintenance, um, he'd like to increase that to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, they have gone from bags to liquid, um, so more product he wishes to be purchased. Any comments on that?
None.
Who applies that, do you apply that, or you have a service?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so, a couple of years ago, uh, the board of selectmen approved us to get all the equipment to put liquid down. Um, so we own all that equipment now, uh, most of that cost is just, or most of that line is just gonna be, uh, purchasing of the calcium, um, and then we take, and we buy some stone for gravel roads, um, in the springtime as well, out of that line, but most of it's gonna be spent on, uh, liquid calcium.
Um, there is an increase to the salt slash sand line, um, it's just purchasing salt at this point. Um, so that went to seventy-nine, seventy-nine per ton, and he purchased his three thousand tons of salt. Uh, roadside mowing, um, that increased to fifteen thousand dollars, so that's a three thousand dollar increase. And the knotweed control, um, increase of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so actually, overall budget, it went down forty-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Okay, for street lighting, um, increase.
What's the percentage of it going down, you say two percent?
Jason went down one point nine eight percent. I'm sorry, highway department went down one point nine eight percent, sorry. Uh, street lighting, uh, increase that to fifty-four hundred, that's based on usage averaging four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Uh, okay, the transfer station, uh, sorry. Again, um, for the payroll, it's the on-call bonus. See an increase, three thousand dollars per person, there's two people. Uh, full-time wages increased because he, um, had an employee that was promoted to foreman. Um, so that would go with that and the payroll taxes in New Hampshire retirement system, goes with that promotion. Um, telephone went up to five hundred and fifty dollars, and that's just based on average. Uh, building maintenance, uh, that, um, increased to three thousand dollars, so it's an increase of two thousand. Um, that's just old buildings up there, continuously need repairs, and that's for all of them, that's for the, the, one that's manned and all the lean-tos and. Uh, the dues, um, for NARA were increased by a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, the hauling contract was, um, increased, so you'll see all the hauling for the trash increased, um, the hauling for the metals increased, the hauling for the loose paper increased, the fuel surcharge was increased, and this was all based on a contract that was signed last year. Um, one of the biggest changes, let's just go back, um, a thousand dollars, so somehow the mowing of the landfill was omitted from the new, um, lawn care contract. Um, so we need to raise that money for next year, we can put it into the contract if the new vendor agrees that they'll do it. Um, somehow it got missed in the contract, so, uh, we need to get the landfill mowed. Um, and then this is gonna be our huge increase, it's the municipal trash, fee disposals, if you will, the tipping fees. Um, again, the one hundred and ninety-one thousand, that's our two thousand and twenty-three number. Um, we need to, at least two hundred and forty-two.
Five dollars a year per ton per year, is that right?
Yep, it's five dollars per ton, yeah, yes. Yep.
There's an agreement signed on that, but it doesn't suffice as a contract?
No, it's just an agreement. Next time that we enter it, which is three years, we're trying to do for a contract.
Even an attorney backed that, if they don't count it as a contract?
Nope, they won't, just like Capital Air and Mutual Aid, they're dispatched, they won't count that as a contract either. Yeah. I tried to figure out a way around that, didn't work. Um, so then, uh, the other increases were that contract for hauling, uh, baler, baler wire. Um, looking for just a thirty-four dollar increase on that, and that's just, um, the cost of increase. Um, the fuel vehicle, um, went down, again, based on the border selectmen's price per gallon. Uh, uniforms, they entered into a new contract, there's a small reduction of seventy-eight dollars. Uh, the monitoring of the wells, the monitoring wells, increased to eleven thousand. Um, just increased testing at the landfill that's failing, um, so we've already spent twenty thousand dollars this year.
Is that?
We're hoping eleven will be enough next year.
Is that part of the repair, that twenty thousand or?
So some, some money did end up having to come out of that for, um, the landfill repair, because we, um, put up the warrant article for a hundred and fifty, it came over just a little bit, um, but still, with the testing. Um, I want to make sure, we're on a program every year to inspect all the drainage pipes, get those camered, make sure that those are free, no blockages, um, so there is, there is an increase in cost on that, so we don't have such a big expenditure again.
But did you spend this year nine thousand dollars on your repairs?
Twenty. Oh, where, what line you in?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, four ninety-six, he's got twenty thousand, oh, eighty-eight, and he's asking for eleven to next year, so I'm just trying to figure out why the nine thousand, is that all for repairs?
Oh, yeah, well, he just said that, um, well, he just told you that some of the, um, landfill work that was done this year is in there.
I know, is it nine thousand dollars worth?
What was it?
I think it was five.
Yeah, I was saying, can I say five?
Okay.
Do you feel confident with eleven?
Yeah.
Um, what's the next, the next increase will be for, uh, tires for the trailers. Increase, uh, five hundred dollars there, signposts and rails, a small increase of fifty dollars, and then hazard waste day, um, this is the service that the voters wanted, um, so that's increased from seven thousand to fifteen thousand, so it's an eight thousand dollar increase.
That's still the same number of days?
Do you do one or two, you do two now?
One day.
Just one day.
Just one day, so one day.
Yeah, it costs thirty-six hundred bucks to set up, so.
Yeah.
You have a percentage change?
Oh, for his budget, uh, transfer station, no, I don't. Oh, I lost my little things. There you are.
I always thought the landfill.
Seventeen percent.
Should be broken out of that in its own separate little category, because it's a hundred percent regulated by the state rules, is how much money you spend, nothing to do with how you operate it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, probably don't make no difference, at the end of the day, it's still taxpayer money, but it's just, you, you have zero say about what happens in the landfill, how much testing you're doing, the state tells you, so, I don't know. You need some, a different year to break it out and see how much of the transfer station budget we're spending on the landfill, make its own little department or something.
So any question on the transfer station budget, anything you have any questions on? Okay, the sewer, um, this budget is, um, user fee, so, um, at the end of every year, whatever is spent out of this budget, I bill the users of the sewer. Um, so whatever the budget is, um, proposing, that's, you're gonna have the offset revenue of that same amount. Um, this one actually went down, two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, big decrease is the electricity, only spending about two hundred dollars a month on electricity. Um, it only spikes when one of the pump fails. Seminars and trainings, we increased that to two fifty, because we have a newly appointed commissioner. Uh, the mowing, it actually costs nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, so might as well put nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in the budget.
Newly appointed commissioner is you, right?
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations.
And for the alarm monitoring, it costs a hundred and fifty dollars, so we put a hundred and fifty dollars in the budget. So that budget actually decreased by two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
How'd you like all the training and seminars on wastewater treatment plants, just so you can run a glorified septic system?
I had that conversation with the state, like, this has nothing to do with us. I mean, I get, I get the fact that you have to have a license for it, but you guys need to come up with a license for that.
You go in the class and every single other person is going to work in wastewater.
Treatment.
Treatment facility, and ninety-eight percent of them already do, so they know what these certain things are, they bring up. Then here, you come from where, and all it is is three leach fields, you've never worked in one in your life, you know, the clarifier, the scraper, but that's what you're tested on, so it's a good, pretty impressive when you pass it, because you have zero experience running such a thing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, so his last department, uh, is water. Um, for training, uh, we put fifty dollars in there, uh, to keep his credit hours up. Uh, the testing, um, three thousand dollars, went over that this year, but hopefully next year, we can do it for three thousand dollars, so that's a five hundred dollar increase. So total increase for that department is five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Any questions on that? And then, chief, uh, last one, um, oh, any more questions for Jason?
Reliefs.
No, I, I think the only, maybe note to make for possibly finance or whatever is just the, where your salt went up, how much it, obviously because of increase, just maybe put what the price per ton is, increase? I don't know, just to save argument at that level, maybe, I don't know. You do, you do say that that's the price times the three thousand, but. It, it's kind of crazy to think fuel's gone down that much, and ships haul the salt, burn fuel, but salt still went up five dollars a ton.
Yeah, I, we'll just put the old price in that one.
So put like the twenty-threes?
Or just an increase of whatever per ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, what last year's ton was in this year's ton?
The twenty-three ton, which is what it was based on. Well, technically, right? Yeah, yeah, I guess, actually, yeah. Just make it right.
Yes, you're right, okay.
Could we just touch on, uh, again, to go back to the, uh, maintenance for the vehicles, for the trucks?
He's, um, proposing no change?
Yeah, but it's not a realistic number. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean.
Which line is it? Four fifty-one?
It is a realistic number, if we can keep on our rotation, um, we had several severe breakdowns this year that really, uh, put us upside down, so, um, like I said, if we keep on that rotation, one of the major breakdowns was a, almost a thirty thousand dollar repair on a truck that would have been traded this year if our rotation was kept up, so.
Two, twenty fifteen?
Yeah, it's a prime example of kind of keeping on that rotation.
Newer trucks, that's terrible.
It is right now, considering all the newer trucks, yeah. Um, again, that's, that's where that rotation comes into play, if we'd had that, we could have, you know, avoided this problem.
But you got one truck that's not even worth repairing at this point, right?
Uh, I mean.
Got more than that.
Yeah.
Because before you had fuel and salt to draw from, that's fuel.
Yep.
Budget.
Yep.
And now it's pretty close to what it's gonna cost, you don't really have a buffer there.
Yeah, the last five years, at least, I guess from two thousand and twenty on, we've been pretty good up until now. Um, and like I said, the backhoe, backhoe needed a rear end, that was twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, thirty thousand dollar repair on a truck, so those two really put us, put us behind.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. No more questions for DPW? Because he's left the building. Um, so now we're to animal control, still here? Yeah, okay, um, again, these numbers are gonna change, uh, based on the decision you made this evening. Um, and the only other change was the, um, price per gallon on the fuel, so that went down, eighty-five dollars. Look at that, so I'll have to change those. Any question?
No.
Uh, good.
Thank you. It looks good.
I'll still make a joke, but I'll leave alone.
I'll make it.
Why not?
You can help yourself, go ahead.
No.
Any chance on, uh, where'd it go? Account, or line five forty, six eighty, AC shelter maintenance, I can change that to AC vehicle.
It's a dollar in there?
Well, you have.
Just checking? That's all I got.
You're funny.
Thank you.
You're funny.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, to the health department, uh, we are proposing an increase of six hundred dollars, because we have zero. And they have a telephone line, um, so we need to increase that. We need to add it, I'm sorry, and then we, um, are trying to offset that by decreasing all the other accounts, just trying to help. Offset that, six hundred dollar phone. offset that six hundred dollar phone bill. So that budget increased by three hundred and forty-three dollars.
How do we pay for mileage? If you're not giving any mileage?
Are they allowed to use a building inspector's truck?
Yeah. Yeah. If it's available?
As long as there's no, Marion uses it for, um, street numbering and, yeah, we use it when we need to. We just don't send it like town clerk, tax collector, myself, if we were going to a conference to stay, we don't take it.
Okay, uh, for welfare, um, in decreasing their telephone, um, they use forty dollars a month average, so decreasing that to four hundred and eighty dollars. Um, increase the meetings, so that, um, obviously, um, what she spent, she wants to attend the active welfare, the class in June. Um, it was decreasing the Saint Joe's Meals on Wheels, um, that was a prior board of selectmen's decision to reduce that. Um, it's a charity, and they always felt that if the individual taxpayer wants to give to a charity, they can, but we shouldn't raise taxes to give to a charity. Uh, postage increase, uh, fifteen dollars because of certified mailings. So overall, that budget decreased by one thousand one hundred and four dollars. Questions on that? Okay. Okay, uh, again, restructuring of the town office. Um, did I get the minute taker? Um, telephones increased, um, to one thousand fifteen dollars, um, based on two thousand twenty-four rates and usage. Um, the electricity increased to twenty-six hundred dollars, because they have to do a lot more watering, um, on the fields, so they don't dry out. Um, outside services, they have gone to ADA compliant portable toilets, um, so that increased by a thousand dollars. Um, this year, they've tried the carry-in, carry-out, and it was successful. Um, so they're decreasing that line by four thousand dollars. Um, supplies, um, they just always need more supplies at the parks, um, for paint, stakes, they go through a lot of wash spray. Uh, a decrease in two thousand dollars in the recreation activity. And that was to help offset the park repairs last year, not this year. So their, um, budget decreased by four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Any comments there? Well, then we have library.
Clay, he's been waiting all night long to hop up.
Let's skip library and we'll get to that one at the
Uh, that's perfectly okay, it's part of my job.
Did Benji get one?
I just think the most important thing, that with the handout, is on the top line where the, says two zero two four, mark out the four and put a five, and then the two zero two five, put, mark out the five and put a six, so. Twenty-five and twenty-six, yeah, about twenty-four and twenty-five. Right, so even though the twenty twenty-five does reflect the default budget back from twenty twenty-three. So that's why we're seeing a lot of the same increases. Uh, these are, um, this was also mentioned in last year's meeting, although on a lottery gentleman we're not hearing last year, but, um, so yeah, just, I mean, just, just let me know if you have any questions. Um, I will say also that when it comes to the, um, operating and expenses, those numbers, they were, um, the, the total numbers, they also reflect uh, funds that we anticipate being raised, either from our annual campaign, fundraising campaign, or from the friends. So even though it shows on the budget, uh, an increase of, um, tw- uh, twenty-seven sixty-one is actually, sorry, twen- that's too late, twenty-three sixty-one, it's going to be, uh, the, uh, raised by taxation increases is gonna be forty-nine oh one. And that's because of the funds, again, we anticipate raising from the friends, from a campaign, also from the, um, the, the trust, trust funding, of the trust fund income increases in that, the, um, donations and, yeah, okay. So, and then on the back, I just, I, I show that in the last, since the default budget was passed, when I made the, the default budget, I was using the numbers of the, the circulation numbers, circulations means how many, uh, times books are, for example, books or other materials are checked in or out. That's, um, how they've increased quite a bit since, a bit since that default budget. I was seeing a sixty percent increase in physi- physical circulation and twenty-eight percent in total circulation. Also, our program attendance has gone up quite a bit as well since, uh, that twenty twenty-two year, and I, I, I just used for the first nine months of each year in comparison. And you can see how, um, you can, I, I, I'm always proud of the rankings when we, you compare us to the, uh, the rest of the libraries in the state. So we, we've done really well as far as, uh, you know, getting the most, paying for a buck, you know, doing, doing more with less, I, I'm always proud of that, so. Any, any questions? Looking good.
Doing a good job over there?
Yeah, thank you, Benji.
Thank you, Clay.
Yeah, thank you, man.
Do you have an extra one? You want the extras, Clay, or?
Thank you. Okay, um, so libraries budget, okay, went up seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Okay, so the patriotic purposes, uh, we eliminated that. We proposed to eliminate it last year, we're proposing to eliminate it again. Don't even know what it's for. Um, I thought it was for flags, but some other outfit purchases the flags.
I think the Legion purchased the flags.
Yeah. Uh, conservation, we just reduced, um, everything to a dollar, uh, because they have a conservation fund that, um, can offset all their expenses, but we want to leave a dollar in there in case, for some reason, someday the conservation fund cannot fund their expenses. Um, economic development, one dollar, just to keep the line open. Uh, energy commission, uh, this is a new line for this year. Uh, well, I think we proposed it last year too, but we didn't get the proposed budget. Uh, so we're proposing four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's for the banner and for dues to New Hampshire Energy Clean. Uh, decrease in ambulance billing services, um, from nine thousand dollars just to one dollar, um, because the special revenue fund pays all the billing expenditures. Um, that's just in case, again, that fund is defunded, we have to take it out of the operating budget. But that fund has always covered the billing expenditures for the ambulance. And there is no change in our debt service. So our total increase is three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, or a four point eleven percent increase. Um, there is that one change in animal control, I'll have to go back and add.
Change in the police department. First contract.
I, I don't know that outcome yet. I don't know that one.
We can, um, and then the only other thing I
Oh, I have to reduce a dollar, the cruiser.
Yeah, but I also, you have to re, um, and I'm sorry if I was out of the room, but cemeteries. We reduced them by nine cemeteries at five hundred dollars a piece, so the contract, as you'll see in line two sixteen, we paid them about forty-five hundred dollars less than. Um, and I think it should be fair to reduce it again by forty-five hundred dollars, they're not doing the nine cemeteries, they refuse to do the nine.
Oh, so going forward?
So going forward for year two and year three, you would take off that forty-five hundred dollars of the nine cemeteries that they opted not to touch.
Okay.
Um, that was an agreement we made with the advisory committee, and we put that forward, is that what you understand?
The one I remember.
Yeah, so they put
For some reason, I thought it was just this year, but
Going forward, though, they put a value on it, because they've been doing some of their site visits and cleaning some stuff themselves up. So I think two sixteen has to reduce, uh, the forty-three ninety, take it down forty-five hundred dollars more. And is it safe to have removed the police?
Yeah, I would say.
So in the police department, do you want me to talk about it? I don't have a problem with it. Um, the chief, we're not gonna do anything to do with the contract, so everything would stay, remove whatever you need to for the contract, and we're gonna leave the part timer in. So we're gonna, um, in not reducing the con, we're not reducing the part time at all.
Uh, what about the part-time admin assistant?
Uh, you can reduce the admin assistant. But the rest of the stuff that's to do with the proposed contract, there is no proposed contract at this time. That's safe?
It is. But, uh, line two thirty-four?
Yeah, well, the other ones, uh, two forty-four has it and two forty-seven has it. They all are reflective of the proposed contract that we're not going forward with right now.
Yes.
That makes sense to you?
It reduces it by quite a little.
So we're gonna put this back in?
Yeah.
Okay, which will change that.
And then are you gonna change the pinks or whatever they're
Yeah, everything to do with the
Yeah, you have to do with the proposed contract comes out, and then the
Okay.
Part time goes back.
Yep.
And then shake it all out and see what that looks like.
Okay. So, anything else in the budget that you saw?
I think it looks good.
Very good job. You know, the department heads that aren't here, just hear it, but thank you to them.
Now, are you confident with this budget to go forward, or you guys need to review it again? Or?
Four more questions than we asked, I, I guess it's up to us to you four, but we beat the snot out of mo- out of most of these lines last year, and so the ones that are increased by a fair amount, I guess we got our explanations.
Well, they came back with a plan.
Yeah, one of them was the, the fire stuff, the fire department, he had a plan, which is what was requested last year. I don't, I don't have any
I don't think you're gonna squeeze much more out of it for it being
Looks like it's been squeezed pretty hard.
Well, twenty twenty-three is default, is what you're looking at.
We're trying to get a proposed budget passed.
Yeah, three years' worth of ketchup.
Yeah, correct, and I think we did a pretty good job. I'm disappointed that the finance committee's not here, but we have one member of the finance committee, but
That'd have been nice, I kind of would have liked, I'd have gave him five minutes to ask a question.
I mean, I, I'm not saying maybe they couldn't do it, you still got, you had fifty-nine viewers today, so I don't know.
If there's any questions by email or whatever, please let us know, because we'd like to work with the finance and important CIP purchases such as cruisers and plow trucks passed and the budget passed. Like I said, I wish, I wish a couple more representatives been here, because I'd entertain five minutes worth of
Questions.
Questions, so we could work together, but
Okay, so we're gonna present this Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday night, we want the finance committee.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be there?
Yeah, we need, we need to have a few
I'll be there.
You'll be there?
Oh, yeah. I don't know, yeah, I don't know what I got for me to do in Boston.
All right, I'm gonna post it as a meeting. Just, I know Bruce is out of town, but I'm gonna post it as a meeting.
Who's gonna be out of town?
Excuse me?
Who's gonna be out of town?
Bruce is leaving.
Is it necessary?
But I'll post it as a meeting.
And that way we can be a united front.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Any questions? This is the board's budget. Because I think in years past, it's always been the department head's budget, and this way if we're this is a board's budget.
Yeah, and you'll have, and you'll have the same
Allowed anybody to speak, but maybe it'll be different this year.
Yeah, and you'll have the same, um,
Hmm?
We'll be there.
The group will go with you.
Right.
That's what we kind of set it up this year to do. And the department heads are going as well.
I would have thought.
No, they are. Um, as Beth said, we've worked together to get this close, and I think they've done a great job, everybody has, and Beth's done a tremendous amount of work, and I want to thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as always, it's always nice and clear and explanations, it, you know.
It's just a lot to go line by line. Yeah, to go line by line, it's a lot, but then you know what's in it.
And some of the stuff we tried taking out last year, it didn't happen, so we'll try again.
Okay, so I'll make those few changes, um, send them to you guys tomorrow, and then next Tuesday?
And then next Tuesday, we'll all go, um, their meetings
Seven.
Seven, their meeting's at seven. Let's post that.
Have they got to do the CIP and the?
Um, they're gonna have questions, but a lot of them said, like, a couple of them went to the CIP meetings, um, and, and the glory of the YouTube is how many people go back and watch. You know, um, I've got enough handouts for everybody, but I believe a good share of them are here. So we'll do that at the same time.
Okay, so you don't need to see any department heads next Monday night?
Nope.
You're very happy with the budget that was presented? Okay. They won't know what happened.
Bye-bye.
They used to come in three, four, five, six times.
Yeah, well, we're not doing that, Benji, you already said that.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Beth, very much.
So the duck pond easement is your next thing, um, I believe, uh, so what we did is, this is to do with the easement around the pond. Um, we talked about it, so, um, Ernie has sent it back, executed by Mr. Tebow. Oops, didn't mean to call anybody. Hopefully I didn't call anybody. Um, Andy stopped this evening to sign for me, so I'll notarize his, and there's one space for Benji to sign, and then it has to go to the registry. Um, I think part of it was drawn out, because, um, I still have the wildlife agreement that's never been signed. So I reached out, because I noticed going to the post office, there's water beside Duck Pond, so I know the beavers are back in there, which sparked getting this done. Um, so it should work hand in hand, they're looking for, USDA is looking for this to be recorded, so we'll get that taken care of, and then they should be able to do whatever they're gonna do with that beaver deceiver and control that from there. I'm fine? My next up, too?
Minutes.
Sorry, Benji.
You ready for minutes?
Um,
Eleven, three.
Yeah, my report doesn't have much on it, other than what we did tonight.
Oh, I missed your report, I'm sorry, now I better check my
There isn't much on it.
No, go ahead.
Um, you did everything, as I said, um, Bruce, the building, Bruce has got an update, actually, on the building permit software for us, um.
Yeah, they're coming in on, uh, December fifth at eleven, if anybody wants to, he's gonna be here for an hour and a half, give, um, building department a hands-on training on it, and leave it set up as a, um, they call it a sandbox, where they can go in
You can play in it.
Play in it, like it's gonna look like in real life. So everybody get, they can get the hang of it, see what they think.
Um, and then, like I said, the follow-up, uh, we already disagreed, we don't need any follow-up on the twenty-fourth with the department ads. Um, then the rest of your meetings, um, are the first, the eighth, the fifteenth, and twenty-second, because, twenty-ninth, because you're not meeting, twenty-second, um, and Beth will be here for all of those. I can be one of the fifty-nine viewers from home this season. I'm always here, you know that. So that's all I have, Benji.
Days left.
Huh?
How many working days left? How many?
Well, I don't do tomorrow, I took Friday off, because I had one extra day that I didn't donate. So then I have two next week and two this week.
So four days.
I have four days left.
Oh, my God.
Benji, I read a thing you missed, um, I want to thank you guys and everybody for all you've done. I haven't held my composure.
Well, thank you for everything, obviously.
Yes, I said, I said at the end, it's not goodbye, it's see you later, so you can just call me, you all know my number.
Fair enough.
Um, we did do manifest while you were, we were looking to buy two minutes.
Perfect.
So then there's just minutes.
Uh, I didn't review nothing, but did you guys review them, because we can still vote on them? Minutes for eleven, three?
I read them, but I wasn't here, so.
Did you read them?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
Bruce, did you read them?
Yeah. I read, I read through them pretty, pretty quick after they're done.
Okay. I wonder.
I didn't read them, but if you guys, if two of you reviewed them and Yeah, I didn't see anything to change. I'm okay voting for them, I mean. I can motion approve the minutes of, uh, November third, has written. Second. On favor? Aye. Aye. Abstentions?
Yes.
So, the committee updates, uh, I was not feeling well on the cemetery one, I did miss that one, but I think that they were just trying to put together what they wanted to do for the following year, so I assume that's what they were working on. According to reading the other minutes.
Is the conservation, uh, meeting on Wednesday?
They did meet very quickly, um, they only had four, because, um, chair They did meet very quickly, they only had four, because Chair and Vice Chair were gone, but they did, they did a great job. Mike, the secretary, ran the meeting, they did a nice job. I think we were out by, and Craig spent an hour of the time going over the proposed wetlands amendment. He took the town of Amerist and they tweaked it together between, and that's gonna be one of the changes this year. Last year, as you remember, we put it forth to do that, and Conservation wanted to review it first. So Craig put all the new things in it, and we're gonna tweak it and send it back out to the planning and the Conservation, but that looks like, that took an hour of the time, and I think their meeting had done it eight-thirty, so it wasn't too, too long, so.
Plan Board's been working on zoning amendments for this year. Trying to get aligned with what's passed in the state in the last two years. Cleaning up a couple things that were lacking.
A U of classics.
Yeah.
Is there, uh, something that's passed at the state level to do with restricting or the not being able to restrict building on classics roads come July next year?
That's right.
Yeah. So Janice, yeah, Kelly Ayotte signed it in July of this year, it passed this year, she didn't sign it until later on, but it becomes effective, and that's one of the changes, because you remember we had seventeen-one-one, and what our proposed change is, seventeen-one-one, it just said, it used to say no building permits, and we're taking off the word no and put building permits per RSA six seventy-four, forty-seven, I don't remember the number, but then anytime the Senate or the House bill goes back and changes and makes an amendment, we don't have to continually change our regs. So what that did is, any classics roads, you still, as long as you have an agreement in the lease form, you can get a building permit after July first of twenty-twenty-six.
Can there be, you can't say no, but you have to build the road up to be the certain standard, or, no, okay.
No, the ones that didn't, one that I was surprised didn't pass, which they're looking at making every town the same for lot sizes.
Oh.
Yeah, and that didn't, that's probably gonna come back this year.
No, the classics road thing doesn't affect subdivisions at all, they're still, it's still not considered for meeting subdivision requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just existing lots on classics roads.
Okay, I, I heard that through other channels, and I thought I would just ask it. Affects a little bit of what we've tried to do over the years, if that's the way it is.
Yeah.
We never tried to prevent it, we just tried to make it so you get the ambulances and fire trucks out.
Yeah, we're not in as bad a shape in that as some towns, some towns just, you know, fought tooth and nail, we're building, giving building permits on classics roads.
Yes. Hopefully there'll be some sort of waiver the homeowner has to sign.
You said the agreement release form?
Yeah.
It's so if the ambulance can't get there, that you don't, the school bus isn't gonna pick up your kids and things like that.
Anything else, anybody, any other committee updates?
Oh, you were gone?
Well, I was, I was here for that, but I wasn't, but I hadn't really been here since, since the last park meeting, where, yeah, the, as we talked about in the budget, the changes over to carry in, carry out, as opposed to keeping trash cans and, and particularly the dumpsters there. We, we saw over the last couple of years that keeping dumpsters on site has worked against us, because everybody in the brother of the sites.
Yes.
It's better to go to Bolton and dump their trash than to go to the transfer station. So, this year with the, just going carry in, carry out, it's made, it made a big difference, keeping the place clean. Obviously, the, you know, WAC has been putting up their own little trash cans for, you know, for things like that. But, but overall, that, that has worked out well, monetary-wise and to keep the place clean. They've decided to purchase some, and put up some more signage, that just has some of the rules that, you know, for stating what's, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, you know, no, no dogs, pets or other, you know, on the fields. No smoking, vaping, alcohol, things like that, and just to verify that this is a carry in, carry out. So there'll be a couple of new font signs going up at the different parks, just to help describe all those things. They have the, I think it was, I think it was John Stark that is coming in to do the new goalposts at, at Bolton. The estimated value of that is about nine thousand dollars, and so when that happens, come springtime.
Schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll schedule a public hearing, the question was about volunteer time going into that, and I didn't, I didn't think we were counting volunteer time, just the, just the.
Materials.
Yeah, just the material for that.
Yeah, we did that when we built the shed down there for the football.
Okay. I don't know if, I don't know if, uh, Park Chairman reached out or not, because I haven't talked to Neil for a month. But there's still some sandbox ties for Bolton that were delivered, but were never installed. So the question was keeping, you know, storage for those at someplace at the, over the winter, if there was space at DPW or.
What are they?
These are the, they're the, they're the sides for the new sandbox, they are very large, kind of like railroad ties, but they're made out of rubber, and they're, some of the, they've got, they have ADA compliant entry ramps and things like that, so.
Where are they?
I'm not sure where they are, they may be at the, they may be at the park right now.
So they just dropped them off and that was that?
I think so. Or they may, or they may be, or they were, they were looking to have them delivered and they didn't know where to put them. I can't remember where.
Yeah, what do they do with the tennis nets? Somebody usually takes down the tennis nets.
Yeah, the tennis nets were gonna be coming down, if they hadn't already come down.
Do you remember where they put them?
Is there a place to lean to with the DPW?
I don't remember where they put them, they used to put them in the basement here, but now the food pantry and the storage units down, the storage is downstairs.
I, I don't know what they, what happened with the tennis, with the tennis nets.
Put the horse sheds to use.
Well, that does bring up, you know, where.
The premises are very heavy, they move them with it.
Oh, they're, they're pretty heavy.
Yeah, you move the fork over to something, you get forks from the loader down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably put them down there somewhere, they could pick them up, right?
The tennis courts themselves are, are kind of in sad shape at the moment, we're at the, it's been resurfaced and resurfaced and resurfaced, and it, and last time anybody talked to the company, they said they, they did it that one more time, and they said they didn't want to touch it again. So, we're gonna be looking at a large cost for doing something with the, with the tennis court. I don't know if we can necessarily, necessarily need to put a warrant article out or something, everybody's looking for grants, what we can do.
I know a number of years ago, and I'm not signing him up, so don't take that, but I, same time I was trying to offer for the boat ramp, I offered if they could find a fence company to take two sides of the fence down. I was gonna excavate the pavement out and have pavement, paving company pave it for whatever the handwork price was. They wanted, there's some special tennis court company to do it, and then come to find out, they use the same pavement as I was gonna. No real science to it. I think it was somewhere between twenty thousand for me and a hundred and something.
Special tennis court mix.
And I'm not trying to sign up Jason, ask him to, but that was the, there was a big difference in, in, they were gonna hire a tennis court company and the town doing it, it was about eighty, eighty grand different. So I can't imagine what it is now, I think it was around a hundred grand, and that's been a while ago.
Well, yeah, I, there's, there's been, you know, it's gonna be at least, you know, at least six figures in there someplace. I, exactly what I don't know, because I don't think we've had any kind of an actual, uh, price put on it yet. But the, but that's, you know, that's, that needs doing at some point. The, um, I think that's it for park, pretty much. Oh, the question, you know, try to remember, the tennis courts, if those were given or done something with under a grant, if anybody remembers when that was, when that was put in.
I thought Denise did all that homework.
Again, you know, see the, see the previous conversation about not being able to access.
They can't access it?
Well, I haven't, I don't, I haven't talked to, to.
The chair, okay.
To the chairs, uh, since.
Okay, 'cause Nick from the IT company went through great stakes to put that on there and have them have access, so if it's somebody that's not, or lost a password, we can always track that back, and he can help them.
All right, I'll, I'll double check with that.
Yeah, 'cause there is a park storage. There is that.
That on OneDrive or?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I know they worked and took it all, because I, she was gonna try to email it to everybody, and then they took it and put it somewhere, but again, I'm not the IT person.
That's through, um, RIT.
RIT, yes, yeah, you might be able to talk better than I do with them, because I don't understand it all.
I can put a ticket in.
Yeah. That's true.
I'm good at that.
Uh, just, I'll, yeah, so one other thing, tax bills were printed today, they'll be going out Wednesday.
Some of them got them early.
Some of you got yours earliest, saved myself postage, thank you on the budget, so you didn't have to increase the budget for postage. Yeah, the girls are gonna be folding and stuffing, and our plan is to put them out by Wednesday or Thursday. And they'll be due unfortunately, December twenty-second. We won't quite ruin Christmas, but somebody's last minute shopping might hurt.
Anything else? All right, was there any correspondence to the business that I'm not remembering?
I, I did get, somebody reached out to me and asked about what it would take to put a streetlight in, and, and I said, our DPW director would probably be the better.
Where?
Corner of one fourteen and, I think, is it Ridge? That's right there by the South Station.
Ridge View.
Ridge View.
Ridge View. And would that, because it's on one fourteen, would that make it town, or would that make it state?
Depending on where they put it in the right of way.
Yeah, and so.
The state, I'm sure the state ain't gonna.
The state, I don't think is gonna want that.
I'm curious how the streetlights work now, I see the bill, I know when I was in Deering, I was tasked with finding out if they worked and how much you're getting charged, and at that time, it's been ten years now, so I'm sure things have changed, but that time, there was a monthly charge per streetlight.
Yeah, they charge you per light per month.
It has nothing to do with how much electricity it burns.
No, it's a flat fee.
I happened, so I got sent to go around, once the lights were supposed to be on, and found that half of them in the town were not, so at least called and.
And we only had one.
Got them to put new bulbs on.
I think it's all the town hall.
Paying for lights every month that don't work.
We have street lighting, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, the lights at the town hall?
Is that it, yeah?
Yeah.
Let's see, we did get an email from a Ware resident regarding the All Seasons Campground and some things about blocking the roads and.
Yeah, it gets passed on to nowhere, actually, yeah, I did see that, I don't know, so.
It's code enforcement.
Yeah.
But again, I guess he talked to me today about that. The things that were, the RSAs that were cited in there, according to him, were not, had anything to do with. If you remember, All Seasons Campground, they can't live there in March, they can't live there in November, so.
Every November, we hear about this.
I know, and we've, and we've gone back and forth, and there's mechanisms if they want to go back to, but it was issued by the court, and now evidently there's, and change, board changes hands, and so now evidently, I'm only reading off the complaint that, um, that everybody else can't stay, but this gentleman can, and if they're locking the doors, what if he needed something?
The gate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's private, there are bylaws, and they can't be in there, the police used to go and make sure no one was in there in March and November, because they can't be residents, so. I mean, code enforcement can do what? Look at it and say it's November and the gate's locked, I'm not sure what we, you know.
I don't know who handles it, I guess.
Because he's like, what do I do? The RSAs have to do with collecting of taxes and something else, is it what he said to me?
Well, they can do a look at it, say, he doesn't find anything non-compliant.
Right, if they lock the gate, it's unfortunate if he's locked in.
He must have a way out, he's not locked in there, he's got.
I'm just saying, but if he locked it, it's, was set up so people wouldn't go in, because they couldn't stay.
Why is that our problem?
I'm not saying it is, we got, you got written to, the town clerk got written to, the building department got written to, the zoning board got written to, the planning board got written to, everybody did looking for some help, but again, it's part of a settlement that the town of Ware tied into, is no March, no November. Kids don't go to school, you don't register your cars, you're not residents.
If they comply with that, that's all you can say, look, they comply with the settlement agreement.
What's that?
If somebody gets locked in, why is that our problem?
As Bruce is saying, it's not, but there, somebody was concerned that someone would be locked in.
Instead of bulk.
And part of the concern was that they were doing it when they weren't supposed to be, and nobody else has access, so why can they?
Right, that was part of it, the maintenance man and his wife and the dogs have, are able to stay all the time, and they're not, not supposed to be.
Are they, is that, they allowed to by court order?
No, nobody is.
Nobody stays.
Then, then they can't stay.
Okay.
You gotta go, code enforcement's gotta tell them the court orders, you know, the agreement says no one's here. You're not known.
Well, the other thing is very hard, is typically when somebody makes a complaint, they put their name down, so you know who you're talking with.
I know it's anonymous.
It was anonymous, so, I mean, he did what he could do, but he doesn't understand. Usually someone will call and give a phone number or something, and you can have a conversation as to what the real issue is, but it's very hard, when you get an email and it's anonymous, just as a Ware citizen, not saying that it's not a concerned citizen, I'm just saying that it's hard to understand what the real concern is. When the RSAs that he led, was led to had nothing to do with part of the letter. That's what was explained to me.
Been a heartburn ever since I've worked for Ware.
You gotta, um, there's a board there, right?
There is a board of directors, yeah.
Probably notify the board of directors, you know, a little copy of the agreement, saying nobody's supposed to be there, period.
Okay. Yeah, I could have Steve do that.
Right.
And then Mr. Kirk and I swapped emails with you guys over the, it was suggestion, remember it was brought up at last time? Yeah.
I saw the emails.
So, um, there was, I guess we agreed to impasse, so we did. I don't know how you quickly solve it, you know what I mean? I know they're unsightly, they are unsightly.
My reading was that he has brought it up before and was told, given an answer before.
Yes.
By Avatar.
Yes.
What's Avatar said?
It just, uh, hang on, I've got it here, I've got the whole chain here.
Avatar told them they don't assess them.
They don't assess them, right.
And that's it, they just don't assess them?
Right.
Because they're movable structures.
Not easily movable, which is what I.
Okay, so they're not easily movable.
Exactly.
Have handle on them, they're portable.
Yeah, so.
Pop a tire on a trailer, that's not easily movable either, but you can still move it.
No. She explained that they do not pick up and assess them, as they're not generally permanent. Many are rented, because they do pick their stuff up, pick it up, and then take it somewhere else, and put it somewhere to store. They find no market value for them, and when potential residential, she's seen that they've been removed prior to the sale, so. I.
I don't.
I believe we.
See, you need to change that with Avatar.
No, but you saw the exchange, so, it was correspondence.
Well, and that's the thing, they, they find no value in them, so even if they did assess them, it'd be zero, so, there's nothing to do with them. They are unsightly, and they are probably not what you want to have a lot of, but there's.
They're waterproof, though.
I, I rented one last year. It was great, because I was trying to get it so I could park in my garage.
Right.
So I put everything in one of those for a few months.
You can drive a vehicle in it.
That's where I stored my motorcycles.
Yeah, exactly, so, anyway, it was under correspondence. So then, on the twenty-fourth, Benji, I know we're gonna, talked about it being quick, because Bruce is out of town and you have something to do, but the only thing I wanted to do is address, Jason and I talked, is we. the only thing I wanted to do is address, Jason and I talked, is we previously approved the amended personnel policy, we do have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
So I was gonna do that at six forty-five, we've already approved all the changes, and then at seven o'clock, um, last week, at the Planning Board, Al's Drive and Cortland were moved on to the Selectmen, so I just had a public hearing, those are the only two things I had on there at seven o'clock. And the traditional administrative report, manifest, minutes, things like that.
We had to have a public hearing for Al's Drive, too?
We did.
You did, yeah, you came in, you came in on it.
At Cortland.
Cortland is the one down on Duck Pond.
Four, did you say we have to have a public hearing for next?
For Cortland.
Oh, for Cortland, oh.
As a classified.
So I'm confused, I thought.
Yeah, sorry.
You said Al's and Cortland.
No, I, I could've. No, Al's and Cortland went to the plan.
See, keep it.
Al's is all done.
Okay.
So that's all I had for next time.
Cortland's.
Done.
All the.
Yeah, we got, uh, sign off from the engineer, we got the as-built, um, we've been back and forth about the bond, um, we'll have it.
There's gonna be a bond for a while, right?
There'll be a hundred and fifty-four thousand maintenance bond, yeah. And Steve has been back and forth, and, and they're aware of it. Okay, that's all I had.
Anything else? Starting thirty each.
There were good enough signatures, I believe. I think there was enough signatures before, right?
Yeah, it works.
Yeah, okay.
There were three signatures on everything in the box.
Thank you.
Will you retain the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.